Want to call to order the April seventeenth Board of Supervisors meeting, begin by a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on page one.
At this time, we'll call roll Supervisor McCartney.
Present.
Supervisor Grunier.
Here.
Supervisor Blundy.
Here.
Supervisor Ross.
Here.
Okay, that constitutes a quorum. All five members are here. I'll begin with the community announcements. Reminder that if you have a community announcement, at any time, you can send an email to admin@lmt.org to request an announcement. The Yardley Farmers Market will be held at Lower Makefield Township Community Center at fifteen fifty Oxford Valley Road from ten AM to twelve PM on Saturday, April twelfth. So this is the last one that's going to be at the community center, Saturday, April twelfth. Remember that day because a lot of stuff is happening. The Parks and Recreation Department is hiring for all seasonal summer positions, including pools, summer camp, and field maintenance. To apply, visit www.lmt.org. Registration for the pool, to register, visit lmt.org. It's best to register by May tenth so that you'll be in position and ready for the new season. Agenda item four E, the Lower Makefield Township Environmental Advisory Council is hosting another Styrofoam and recycling event at the Township Building. That's eleven hundred Edgewood Road on Saturday, April twentieth, from ten AM to noon. If you want to go from that recycling event, you can go to the Birthday Lawn Bandits, Third Annual Strolling for Service Dogs fundraiser on Saturday, April twentieth, same day, eleven AM to three PM at the Garden of Reflection. That's a wonderful event. It's again nineteen fifty Woodside Road. The Lower Makefield Township Environmental Advisory Council is also sponsoring a free PA Birdtown Falconry Class at Memorial Park, nineteen fifty Woodside Road on Saturday, April twentieth. Hint, there's a lot of stuff happening on Saturday, April twentieth. You don't want to miss it. That starts at three PM. And the friends at Five Mile Woods will be hosting an open house and ribbon cutting ceremony for the new ADA accessible boardwalk project from twelve PM to four PM on Sunday, that's this Sunday, April twenty first, two thousand and twenty-four. Lower Makefield Township's yard waste recycling days are back. The next scheduled yard waste drop off day is Saturday, April twenty seventh, from seven AM to three PM behind the Township Building, eleven hundred Edgewood Road. For a full schedule, you can check the Public Works Departmental page on our website. Lower Makefield Township is also hosting a Red Cross Blood Drive on Friday, May third, from twelve PM to five PM in the main meeting room of the Township Building. That's right here. To sign up or to get more information, go to redcrossblood.org, enter sponsor code LowerMakefield. Now, if you can't attend that blood drive, you can also register for other blood drives as well. So moving on to agenda item five, that would be public comment on non-agenda items. So if you want to talk about something that's on the agenda, this would be your time to come to the podium. I'm not seeing anybody in line. Is there anybody on the phone at this time that needs, that would like to speak in public comment?
There's no public comment online.
With that, I'd like to revise the agenda at, with the consent of my fellow board members, to move up section nine for police activity and begin with section nine A, presentation of commendations and awards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we begin on the police agenda, I would like to thank the officers, their family and their guests for being here tonight. It's very important to our officers who are receiving these outstanding awards and achievements throughout the ranks of the Police Department. One of the most enjoyable and proud moments of my responsibility as Chief of Police is to recognize officers for their outstanding performance and service, and also to honor the career of a dedicated officer and to recommend the promotion of highly qualified individuals. And at this point, I'd like to call up Detective Sergeant Brian Omler, who will assist in the presentations.
The first item on the police agenda this evening is the presentation of police commendations. Patrolman Timothy Bachman, please stand. Patrolman Bachman is being presented with a commendatory letter. The commendatory letter, as such, on February twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, you initiated an investigation of an occupant in a parked vehicle in a residential neighborhood of Lower Makefield Township. During the investigation of this subject, you observed a handgun protruding from your front seat. The subject noticing that you observed the weapon fled in his vehicle. You gave chase, but terminated the pursuit due to the safety of residents. You then investigated and determined the identity of the occupant and notified other police agencies of the wanted vehicle. Days later, you learned that the suspect vehicle may be heading towards Falls Township. Officers were alerted and were able to stop the vehicle. The male fled on foot and managed to elude police. Subsequently, the firearm, a fully loaded nine millimeter handgun with an extended magazine was recovered. Arrest warrants were issued for the male, who was determined to have an extensive criminal history. On March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, you initiated a traffic stop for multiple violations. During this investigation, and while approaching the vehicle, you observed the driver bending over and reaching down along the side of the seat. You immediately removed the male driver from the vehicle, and a struggle ensued. The male was subdued and placed in handcuffs. A search of this vehicle produced a nine millimeter handgun, also with a large capacity magazine and loaded with twenty-five rounds of ammunition. For your observant and dedicated patrol work and continued efforts in protecting the safety of this community by removing dangerous criminals and weapons, without regard for your personal safety, you are hereby commended. Officer Bachman, please come forward. Second. Corporal Jerry Scherf and Patrolman Steve Markle, please stand. Corporal Scherf and Patrolman Markle are being presented with a life-saving commendation. Commendation as such, on Thursday, September twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, Corporal Jerry Scherf and Patrolman Stephen Markle responded to the Township tennis courts on Cardinal Drive for an unresponsive male that had fell and struck his head. Upon arrival, officers found the male unresponsive, checked his pulse, and determined that the male was in cardiac arrest. Corporal Jerry Scherf immediately began performing chest compressions. Moments later, Officer Markle arrived with a defibrillator. Officer Markle applied the defibrillator to the victim, and after analyzing the rhythm, it ordered a shock. Chest compressions were continued by both Corporal Scherf and Patrolman Markle for several rounds of CPR. Rescue personnel arrived and prepared the male for transport. Prior to transport, rescue personnel advised that the male had regained his pulse. The victim was transported to the hospital where he made a full recovery. Your skills of observation, quick assessment of this critical, life-threatening incident, and your immediate action providing life-saving CPR was directly responsible in reversing this cardiac arrest and preserving human life. Your performance exemplifies your commitment to the citizens of Lower Makefield Township and your professionalism as Lower Makefield Police Officers. Corporal Scherf and Patrolman Markle, please come forward. Patrolman James Rivers is being presented with a life-saving commendation. Unfortunately, Patrolman Rivers was unable to attend this evening. The commendation reads as such, on Friday, February tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Patrolman Rivers responded to the six hundred block of River Road for a report of a thirty-six-year-old female who had possibly overdosed. Upon arrival, Patrolman Rivers was directed to the second floor of the residence. With naloxone in hand, Patrolman Rivers found the female unresponsive with agonal breathing. Patrolman Rivers quickly assessed the victim, asking her father questions, and surmised that the victim was suffering from an opiate overdose. Patrolman Rivers immediately administered one dose of naloxone to the victim. Shortly thereafter, the victim regained consciousness and her breathing improved. Patrolman Rivers' skills of observation, quick assessment of this critical, life-threatening incident, and Patrolman Rivers' immediate action administering naloxone were all directly responsible for reversing the debilitating effects of opiates and saving the victim's life. Patrolman Rivers' performance exemplifies the commitment to the citizens of Lower Makefield Township and his professionalism as a Lower Makefield Police Officer. Accepting the award on his behalf, Patrolman Forrest, please step forward. The next commendation is a unit citation. As background, on February sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-four, officers from the Lower Makefield Township Police Department were dispatched to the Brookstone Development for the report of a burglary in progress. Arriving officers discovered that the incident was actually a domestic violence incident during which a nineteen-year-old female was stabbed over fourteen times. Responding officers immediately performed life-saving measures on the victim. Additional officers gave chase to the suspect, who had fled on foot, apprehending him a short distance away. The victim, nineteen-year-old Jayden Batista, tragically succumbed to her injuries. Will the following officers please stand? Sergeant Brian Holder. Corporal Jerry Scherf. Patrolman Robert Kennedy. Patrolman Michael Forrest. Patrolman Brendan Montemorano. Patrolman Christopher Reardon. And unable to be in attendance here this evening, also all Patrolman Ferry and Patrolman Patrick Cahill. The unit citation reads as such, on Friday, February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at approximately two twenty PM, officers responded to the Brookstone Development for the report of a burglary in progress. On arrival, Officer Rob Kennedy observed a male chasing after a female on Waterford Road. Officer Kennedy saw the male overtake the female and stab her multiple times. Officer Kennedy immediately rushed to the woman's aid as the male fled on foot. As Officer Kennedy assisted by Officers Mike Forrest and Brendan Montemorano, remained with the female victim, providing urgent medical care, while Sergeant Brian Holder and Corporal Jerry Scherf, along with his canine partner Recon, and Officer Christopher Reardon simultaneously pursued the male subject, who was still armed with a knife. Officers Patrick Cahill and Steve Ferry converged from opposing directions to establish a perimeter around the subject to prevent his escape. In a relentless effort to apprehend the subject, Sergeant Holder physically forced his way through a stockade fence, while Corporal Scherf carried his canine partner across the ravine. Sergeant Holder, Corporal Scherf, and Officer Reardon risked their own safety crossing a heavily traveled interstate highway and ultimately captured the subject in the highway's median. Despite the valiant efforts made by Officers Kennedy, Forrest, and Montemorano, the female victim unfortunately succumbed to her critical injuries. Because of the immediate response by all of the officers, their intelligent and tactical decisions, an unwavering pursuit of an armed and dangerous subject, a violent individual was captured, ensuring that the community would remain safe. The performance by members of D Squad exemplifies their commitment to the citizens of Lower Makefield Township and their professionalism as Lower Makefield Police Officers. Sergeant Holder, will you please come forward to accept the unit citation? This concludes the presentation of the police commendations. Also, just like to say, family members of the officers will be invited back to the police station following the program for additional photographs. Next item on the police agenda is the retirement of Lieutenant Brian Golda. Lieutenant Golda, please stand. Mr. Chairman, would you like to read and present the proclamation for Lieutenant Golda?
I would be honored to. We, the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Lower Makefield, hereby extends grateful appreciation to Lieutenant Brian Golda on your retirement after twenty-eight years of service with Lower Makefield Township Police Department. Whereas Golda served the people of Lower Makefield Township, the state of Pennsylvania, and Bucks County with pride and distinction as a law enforcement officer. Whereas he was appointed police officer on March fourth, nineteen ninety-six, and graduated from Temple University Police Academy. Whereas throughout his career, he has risen through the ranks with well-deserved promotions and held the ranks of corporal, sergeant, and lieutenant. He was promoted to lieutenant on January first, two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas Golda has attained numerous certifications and was the recipient of the Police Department's prestigious life-saving commendation. During his career, he was responsible to oversee the Police Department's patrol unit. He was a canine officer from two thousand and six to two thousand and seventeen, working with his canine partner Jasmine. Whereas lieutenant was a commander assigned to oversee the South Central Bucks County Special Weapons and Tactical Team, where he conducted many operations to apprehend armed and dangerous individuals. Whereas we are honored to have had this outstanding and Whereas we are honored to have had this outstanding and unwavering public servant for so many years in our township. Therefore, the Board of Supervisors proudly presents you with this proclamation evidencing the respect, the admiration, and appreciation of this legislative body. Congratulations and good luck. You served us well, and we wish you happiness and prosperity in your retirement and all of your future endeavors.
Lieutenant Goldar, please. At this time, I'd like to invite Patrolman Keith Goldar and Lieutenant Goldar's family members, if they would like to come forward. With Lieutenant Goldar tonight, his family members, his wife Audra, daughter Katie, his parents, and a couple of his brothers as well. Next item on the police agenda are promotions to the rank of lieutenant and sergeant. Sergeant Bradley, please stand. Sergeant Kurt Bradley has thirty-four years' experience as a law enforcement officer. He is a graduate of Central High School and attended Penn State University. Sergeant Bradley joined the Philadelphia Police Department, graduating from their police academy in nineteen ninety. During his time as a patrol officer in Philadelphia, he was assigned to high crime areas, working both the twenty-second and thirty-ninth police districts. He served in uniform and at times as an undercover officer. Sergeant Bradley was responsible for over two hundred arrests, including homicide, robbery, burglary, theft, and narcotics distribution. In nineteen ninety-six, Sergeant Bradley was promoted to the rank of detective in the Philadelphia Police Department. He was assigned to the Northeast Detective Division and then to the Detective Special Investigation Unit. He was awarded numerous police department commendations for outstanding service, such as the arrest of a homicide suspect that had just shot and killed his victim, the arrest of a suspect that was responsible for multiple robberies of elderly victims, investigation and arrest of two suspects who had committed twelve home invasion burglaries, and the investigation and arrest of four individuals for over fifty-one thefts from autos and credit card fraud. In June of two thousand five, Sergeant Bradley was hired as a lower Makefield Township police officer by the Board of Supervisors. In August of two thousand fourteen, he was promoted to the rank of corporal. In July, two thousand nineteen, promoted to the rank of sergeant. During his service to the Lower Makefield Township Police Department, Sergeant Bradley has been the recipient of the lifesaving award. Sergeant Bradley has served as a patrol supervisor and was also responsible for conducting school security and safety assessments. He is currently the police department's firearm supervisor and training coordinator.
I acknowledge Bradley's outstanding service, and I am grateful to him for his dedication to this community, and I proudly recommend to the Board of Supervisors his promotion to the rank of lieutenant.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of the promotion of Sergeant Kurt Bradley to lieutenant signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it five zero. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Lieutenant Bradley, please come forward. At this time, I'd ask Lieutenant Bradley's wife, Sunshine, to come forward. Roman Jason Landis, please stand. Roman Landis graduated from the Montgomery County Municipal Police Academy in two thousand and ten. He was subsequently appointed as a police officer by the Lower Makefield Township Board of Supervisors in September of two thousand and ten. He is a graduate of Central Bucks High School and holds a bachelor of science degree from Westchester University. Roman Landis is also certified by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in health and physical education. While serving in the Lower Makefield Police Department, Roman Landis aspired to be a canine officer. He applied and was selected to attend the New Jersey State Police Canine Training Academy, where he trained along with his German Shepherd and canine partner Titan. Patrolman Landis and Titan graduated from the New Jersey State Police Canine Patrol and Scent Class in June of two thousand and seventeen. After several years of distinguished service, Canine Titan passed away. Roman Landis is currently serving as an acting corporal, assisting in the supervision of the police patrol division. In April of two thousand and twenty-two, Roman Landis completed a vigorous promotion process and scored as a top candidate.
It is my distinct pleasure to recommend to the Board of Supervisors the promotion of Jason Landis to the rank of sergeant.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
With that, I'll call a question. All those in favor of promoting Patrolman Jason Landis to sergeant signify by saying aye.
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 Vote is five zero. Congratulations, Sergeant Landis.
Sergeant Landis, please come forward. At this time, I would like to invite Sergeant Landis's wife, Ashley, and his family members to please come forward.
I would be remiss if I did not recognize Jason Landis's dad, J R. Landis, who served thirty-four years as a law enforcement officer with Buckingham Township P D. I'm sure you're proud, J R.
And that would conclude the police section of the agenda of the meeting. Thank you.
Again, special thanks to everybody here in attendance, and always a special thanks to the Board of Supervisors for their time and their support of Lower Makefield Police Department. Thank you very much.
We'll take a short, two-minute recess for folks to exit.
Are you going to this party? You gonna hang on?
None, none of these people are here for you. Oh, is this, is this our opportunity to leave as well?
Yeah. They're throwing a party.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't be afraid to bring some of those food, uh, party food back up here for us.
Of items that are non-controversial and that can be considered en masse. But if there's a member of the board who would like to remove something from the consent agenda, you have the opportunity to do that now. Not seeing any. Is there a member of the public that would want something removed from the consent agenda for individual discussion? Not seeing anyone. Is there anyone on the phone?
There is no public comment online.
Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda items as delivered.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Eyes have it. That is five zero. At this time, we'll move on to agenda item seven, fire services.
Greatest or finest?
Well, would you wanted to have the audience?
Oh, I, it.
You're holding them back from a party.
That is true. That is true. So.
You can always sit at the table if it's more comfortable.
Oh, I'm fine. It's a hard act to follow, so I forget. So thank you again on behalf of the chief officers of the Yardley Makefield Fire Company. They would like to thank the board for many years of continued support and for allowing me a few minutes tonight to present their twenty-three year-end report. Perfect. The Yardley Makefield Fire Company, like most organizations, was required to deal with a degree of fiscal uncertainty throughout most of two thousand twenty-three, brought on by inflation and predictions of significant economic impacts. Though they adapted to these challenges by evaluating and updating processes to stay in front of the production delays, supply chain issues, increased costs for goods and services, they continue to look for new and creative methods in all aspects of the operations to ensure continued fiscal responsibility while honoring the commitment to provide the highest level of public service possible. Slide two.
Can you advance the slide?
Next slide, please. We could be frozen. We don't know. It's not coming up. See, I followed that great presentation and this would happen.
I think you skipped forward. So if you could go back one.
Slide. We'll go to slide two if you can. There. Can that come up? There we go. All right. Thank you. Oh, wait, never mind. There we go. The fire company answered a total of five hundred and eighty dispatched emergency calls for service in 2023, which totaled twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-two man-hours from our volunteers. In those calls, there were five significant, significant house fires, five vehicle fires, two extended vehicle extrications, and nine high-water rescues within our first due area, which is Lower Mayfield and Yardley Borough. With these, they have assisted on mutual aid departments of eight house fires, two building fires, and two extended vehicle extrications. If you look at the graph on the TV, the fire company ranked fifth in the entire county in twenty-three for dispatched emergency calls within their own coverage area. Looking at the chart, the four other companies above them are supported by career staff during daytime hours when most of their volunteers aren't available. Breaking down the four hundred and seventy calls the fire company answered, four hundred and twenty-five were in Lower Mayfield and forty-five were in Yardley Borough. This chart does not depict, though, the service calls that come into the station or through the fire director's desk that require fire company response. Each department could possibly add another seventy-five to a hundred calls for service on this chart when this stuff happens. Slide three. Oh, no. There's only ten slides, so it's not gonna take.
No, there's not.
No, there's zero. Yeah, yeah.
Great. Okay, good. The calls for service vary throughout the day, but for the most part, the bulk of the calls become between eight-thirty and ten PM, as you can see on the chart. Four hundred and sixteen calls. There are several logical reasons for this, such as more vehicles on the road, more people awake, moving around, more people in the township and borough during these hours for businesses and pleasure. The important thing to realize is that our busiest hours also overlap many of the hours most volunteers are at their full-time jobs. Also, looking at the graph, there's a hundred and sixty-four calls that come between ten PM and eight AM. Most of the time, we're all trying to sleep. Anytime our sleep is interrupted, it has an effect on our bodies and our health. Most calls for service last at a minimum a half an hour to upwards of four to five hours, depending on the emergency. The effects of chronic sleep interruption and irregular sleep patterns have been linked to leading causes of firefighter deaths. Reoccurring sleep loss has not only been correlated with heart attacks, suicide, and metabolic disorders, but also cancer. Cancer Research Center in Seattle, Washington, found that people who sleep less than six hours per night before their cancer diagnosis were one and a half times more likely to die from their disease than people who sleep seven to eight hours per night. So we'll make this quick so we can get home and sleep. Okay? Next slide, please. Oh, this is easier. Good. This graph shows the breakdown of calls during the days of the week. Once again, there's no rhyme or reason. Certain days are busier than others, but it does show that Saturdays, when most volunteers are off from their regular job, spending time with their families, are being called for some kind of emergency. On average, there's fifty-two Saturdays in a year, so there's almost two calls per Saturday the fire company is being asked to answer. Next slide. The fire company had forty-six of its members meet the requirements set forth by the bylaws to consider to be active, which is responding to twenty-five percent of the dispatched emergency calls. When we take a closer look at the forty-six members, we'll see that nine of them are fire police officers who assist in trafficking crowd control at emergency scenes. Three members are volunteer assistant fire marshals who respond directly to the scene to assist the fire service director with investigations. Two members are chief officers who respond directly to the scene to size up the incident and determine what actions are needed. Seven of those members are driver operators who are vital to their operations but do not necessarily count towards the crew. The two top driver operators who drive most are over seventy years old, and one of them's in the crowd right now. Highlight. This leaves twenty-five interior qualified members who respond to the fire stations to ensure that the apparatus is staffed. Of the twenty-five members, ten are over the age of fifty and fifteen are under the age of fifty, with the average age of our interior qualified members about forty-nine point nine five. Now, this may seem reasonable that there are fifteen active members under the age of fifty, but most of those members work out of town, have children who are involved in activities seven days a week, and have other interests to take away from them being more currently involved. Next slide, please. When we break down the average age of our members who respond on the first piece out, first responding apparatus out of the firehouse during the day, which is considered six AM to six PM, the way the county breaks it down, the average age of the apparatus manpower is fifty-one point seven six years old. On the flip side, at night, from six PM to six AM, it drops down to forty-three point two four. So I'll paint a little picture for everybody. One of the more recent emergency calls we had was a possible house fire with smoke in a basement. The first out apparatus had my seventy-six-year-old driver, a sixty-eight-year-old fire officer, a seventy-three-year-old, and a twenty-three-year-old as a crew member. So the work that those three senior guys, as we like to call them, is a lot more because their crew is small and their age is a little up there. Next slide. The graph shown on the TV now depicts the average amount of personnel on the first out apparatus during the day from each station. Four and a half from the Woodside Station, that's the station across from McCafferys and Township, and three point seven from the Borough Station on Main Street. Let's remember, as we mentioned earlier, the driver operator does not enter the building or use the rescue tools. His sole responsibility is to ensure there's water in the truck and all the tools come off the truck. So we can really break those numbers down and reduce them by one. So three point five and two point seven are the crews that are gonna be actually operating on the scene. Next slide, please. Since January of two thousand and seventeen, there have been fifty-one new members accepted into membership in the fire company, which is outstanding. Of the eighteen, of the fifty-one people that have been accepted into membership, thirty-one have already resigned or inactive due to lack of time or changes in personal lives. One is out on military leave, nine are active fire police officers, and ten are interior qualified firefighters. In the same time span, we lost seventeen senior members to either retiring from firefighting duty or moving out of the area, fourteen interior firefighters and three fire police officers. Keep in mind the years of experience that we have lost with these seventeen members leaving, and it takes many years for new members to gain that knowledge to be well-rounded in today's day and age. While we're not alone in the struggle to retain and recruit members to fill the gaps left by others leaving or retiring, the whole world struggles with finding good help. Our mutual aid companies are facing the same struggles in which we are seen when there's an emergency. Numerous companies are being called to perform tasks. We're getting called now over to New Jersey, to Hunterton County, to New Hope because of the, the amount of volunteers that they lack. Next slide, please. Members have completed numerous schools and academies in two thousand and twenty-three, totaling over five thousand man-hours. Five members, members completed the hundred ninety-two over-four-months National Fire One course. Seven members completed the forty-eight-hour, over-two-month-vehicle-rescue operations course. As mentioned earlier, these classes are just the tip of the iceberg for new members to gain knowledge needed in today's fire service. Not everything needed is taught in the classroom. Real-world experience is needed, and that could take years. Also, in two thousand and twenty-three, the fire company is recognized by the State Fire Academy for having at least seventy-five percent of its active firefighters nationally certified to a level. That could be Fire One, that could be a hazmat level, that could be a vehicle rescue level. Uh, next slide, please. In closing, the fire company's members contributed thirty-three thousand, four hundred and forty man-hours for two thousand and twenty-three, which doesn't take into account the countless hours the administrative officers give. Although our active membership is strong, the age and availability of those members are a concern, especially during daytime hours, as seen in the graph presented tonight. The call volume has risen significantly. Back in the nineteen seventies and eighties, whenever a lot of developments were being built, the fire company ran a hundred and thirty-six calls for service. Fast forward to two thousand and twenty-four, where the fire company has run a hundred and eighty calls already, and it's only mid-April. Our township continues to grow with new housing and commercial developments being proposed, and with our aging community, where will all service calls be then? In two thousand and twenty-one, the Bucks County Planning Service, Planning Commit Commission, did a study on the future of Bucks County fire service, where it states that in Bucks County alone, there are a shortage of approximately seven hundred and seventy firefighters. It also states that shifting personal priorities, community expectations, and a decline in the social fabric, which once supported fire companies, have all combined to create the perfect storm. The fire company looks forward to working together to find solutions to continue to provide residents and business owners with the best fire protection in the county. I know in your package, you've got the end-of-year report. There's a lot more information on that. I'll have it put on the, the website for the, for anybody to look at as well, so. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them tonight. Um, as I said, the president of the fire company's here, so if you need to ask any questions of him, I'd be more than willing to, to answer them quickly tonight or in the future. So, thank you for your time.
Are there any members with questions? Any members of the public with questions? No one on the phone? Thank you. We appreciate your service and thank the fire company for their service as well. And, uh, we appreciate certainly your work in terms of helping us recruit additional people. If there's someone who might be watching and thinking, hey, that they'd like to be a volunteer, who should they call and how should they take action?
So they can go to our website, YardleyMayfieldFire.com. There's, uh, information on, on one of the tabs there about all our different types of membership roles. There's a way you can answer questions on that. You can submit questions. There's an application portion. Um, and there's also contact information to the office here, my office, and the fire company recruitment office. So they can reach out to that. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Charman.
Moving on to agenda item eight, Parks and Recreation.
Today, I'm here to ask the board to consider the approval of the change order number one for American Pools in the amount of four thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-one cents.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do, uh, the change order is for concrete patching, where we had the replacement filter where the old returns were in the Olympic pool. If you remember, I believe it's twenty eighteen or nineteen, we had those, those replaced. Right now, what's happening is the concrete patches are chipping completely off as they are starting to get ready for painting, so they desperately need patching before the season starts. And this project, um, remains under budget by about forty thousand dollars.
Is there a supervisor questions?
You were saying this is sort of a.
Do you make it, Dan?
Let me get it closer. Is, this is a new patch to an old patch, essentially? Is that?
Yes, it's a replacement patch.
Do we think that'll be, uh, sufficient? Th- this old patch is what, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, so?
Yeah.
How long, what, what's the life of this one, do you think?
Oh, we might see the same kind of return. Um, in a few years, we might have to patch it again.
Is, have, have we discussed a long-term fix? So we're not patching all, yeah? If we can fix it next time around for more permanent fix?
Yeah, sure. I could, um, talk to American Pools about if there's some way to make it last a little longer, no problem.
Yeah, I'm curious to, you know, answer prevention kind of thing.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any public questions or questions on the phone?
There's no public comment online.
Hearing no, uh, additional questions or comments, I'll call the question. All those in favor of change order number one from American Pools in the amount of four thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-one cents, signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it, five zero.
Monica, could you just stay for a second?
Sure.
Um, as we, uh, talked about at the earlier part of the meeting, uh, there's gonna be the ribbon cutting for the accessibility path at Five Mile Woods, and I hope everyone, uh, who can attend does attend. But I did wanna call out, um, not just the volunteers, but specifically Monica's dad, who is not a Lower Mayfield Township president, but has been at the woods, if not every day, almost every day, going so far to, um, having set up a tent during the week of tremendous rain so that he continued to be able to make progress on the path. This, this stuff is so hard for me. Uh, Monica, it's a great project. Your father's commitment is, is wonderful. All the volunteers are wonderful, but being out in the rain under your tent to try to keep the path going, it's just fantastic. Please thank him for us.
Thank you. I'll let him know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item ten, Public Works.
All, all of you wanna come up or? Eric, you, you might wanna come up as well, just in, yeah.
Good evening and, uh, appreciate your time, uh, tonight. Um, so my name's Kyle. I work with Aqua. I'm the manager of wastewater operations here in Southeast PA.
Kyle, your last name for the record?
Roberts.
Okay, and you're not a township resident?
I'm not.
Okay, go ahead.
And I, I just wanted to spend some time tonight to, uh, talk about what's going on in the Lower Mayfield Township sewer system. So if you could start the slideshow.
Yeah, if you could go just one slide back.
Yeah, but if you could back up one. All right, so, uh, the collection system, um, specifically showed in the, um, picture on the right, um, outlined in orange, uh, that flows to the Silver Lake Pump Station is, uh, surcharging. In other words, there's more water getting into the system than the system can handle, and the system backs up. The result of that has been, as many may know, um, a series of SSOs. Uh, you can see on the map in the green dots, we've seen SSOs on Countess and, and Ramsey. And also resulted in two customers having sewage backups into their houses.
Kyle, could you, uh, explain SSO for people listening at home?
My fault. An SSO is a sanitary sewer overflow, so.
Thank you.
Sewage in the pipe comes out, uh, onto the, onto the ground. So if you go to the next slide, um, so why is this happening? So with the information we have available now, we believe there's two major contributing factors. So the first is that the, the pipe highlighted, um, in yellow there in the easement, um, next to Silver Lake, which carries the flow from the area outlined in orange on the previous slide to the Silver Lake Pump Station. We, there's a, there's a defect in that pipe that's causing restriction. And, and that causes the flow to back up into the rest of the system. The, the second reason is the amount of rainfall we've seen. This year to date, um, as seen on the graph or the, the picture in the right, um, this area has seen, uh, fifty-one to seventy-five percent, um, greater than normal rainfall. I mean, what that means for us is that rain has, has a way of finding its way into the sewer system. And it causes, it contributes to the capacity issues, uh, that I'm talking about here. So when you combine the, uh, higher-than-normal rainfall and the restriction in the pipe, it kind of amplifies itself and, and creates that surcharge back into the system that causes the, the sewer overflows. So if you go to the next slide, what are we doing to try to resolve the issue, right? So, um, we constructed a temporary road to allow us to get access to the manholes within the easement. With that access, we set up a bypass pump operation. So basically what that does is it allows us to, uh, use a system of pumps and pipes over the ground to divert the water from the pipe underground so that we can put a camera in and inspect it. in and inspect it. So what we found was, yesterday, we put the camera in the pipe and found several defects that would contribute to this restriction in the pipe and cause the surcharge that we're seeing. So we have initiated a project, starting yesterday, to mobilize a contractor to start to replace the line within the easement. So the idea is if we replace the line, we remove that restriction and eliminate that as a potential cause of the surcharge that's causing water to back up throughout the system. So if you go to the next slide, so as I said, this should help, but there's other things that we can do to help prevent this surcharging in the system, including some things that homeowners can do. So this picture on the slide here is an illustration of the, what Aqua, as the sewer provider, owns first, what the homeowner owns. Just a distinction, there is a line that shows the difference, says right-of-way. In Lower Makefield, the distinction is edge of road or curb line. Just wanted to make sure I pointed that out. But the things that I would ask homeowners to look for are, for example, the lateral cleanout, very common for a lawnmower to hit it, pop the cap off, break the cleanout to grade, and it provides an easy way for water to kind of pour into the system. And then the two other things would be sump pumps in your basement or roof drains, they should not be connected to the sanitary sewer system, because the system's not designed to handle flow from rainfall, stormwater, groundwater, et cetera. So just ask that, along with what we're doing to try to help the issue, that homeowners take some time to look for these things, to aid in this. Really, any amount of water we can eliminate from going into the system helps reduce the potential for sewer overflows. So that's what I have to go through today. We'll continue to be out in the system, looking for anything we can do to try to find and fix and reduce the water that's getting into the system that shouldn't be. So again, I appreciate the time here tonight to talk to you guys, and welcome any questions, if there's time.
Any supervisors with questions?
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
So... I see you laughing. So area of Silver Lake... Back up for the mic for once. It's not me. Good?
Thank God, yes.
All right, try that again. So area of Silver Lake, did we have any discharges that made their way to the lake, or any water courses in the area?
Yeah, so the overflows that happened in the area of Countess did find their way into the storm sewer, and which I guess eventually leads to the Silver Lake. The, right now, what we believe, the water that overflowed onto the road and into the lake was mostly stormwater. Like I said, a lot of the water that's getting in is stormwater, rainwater that overwhelms the system, so it's stormwater or diluted sewage. So we don't believe there's any risk to the public or anything like that.
Was, I'm assuming DEP's been involved? Have they issued any violations or any notices, et cetera?
We, yeah, we've notified DEP, followed standard procedure there, and to this time, we have not received any violations from the DEP.
Other, you mentioned there's some backups into some homeowners, have they incurred any damage, any issues? Are they able to inhabit their homes? Where are we at with them?
Yeah, there was damage, I'm aware of two backups, both have been resolved at this time, and as far as I know, they're able to occupy their houses.
In terms of the pipe, whatever length the pipe it was, what's the remedial action you're taking? I know you're looking at bypasses now, you've installed the, what I would call the wetland mats or timber mats, right, to get access?
Exactly.
And you're doing the pump rounds now, or bypasses, but what's the ultimate plan to address the issue in this area?
Yeah, so we've engaged a contractor, and we're starting the plan to actually replace the entire length in that easement next to the lake.
So it's new pipe in its entirety, you're not...
Brand-new, brand-new pipe, yeah, dig and replace. As of now, that's the plan, right? We'll know a lot more once we actually, or to daylight the pipe.
And are you seeing any similar issues anywhere else, now that we have had so much rain? Are you noticing other issues in other parts of the township where we may have this again?
Yeah, I mean, this issue is nationwide, right? This INI infiltration infiltration is a thing, right? So it's happening, as far as any other specific areas, off the top of my head, I don't know specifically, but anything that we do find, we'll keep in touch with the Public Works Department and fix it as fast as possible.
Does, you know, a few years back, when the township still owned the system, we set up a seven-year plan to fund lots of different projects, primarily INI-related, a lot of lining, some pump station stuff, but mostly INI-related. Has Aqua developed a similar plan for long-term upgrade and maintenance of the system?
Yeah, we have a ten-year plan, we're required to put a ten-year plan together of capital improvements. We do have allowances in there for INI improvement every year, and it's a dynamic plan, it changes as we get more data, we're changing the plan and allocating, or we fix these issues.
Is that something that you would typically share, at least with the township, if not with the public, so that we can sort of plan?
Yeah, I can check back with my management and see, I don't see a problem why it would be an issue to share.
Just, I know, I'm sure our public works director could be of some use, some knowledge, and it would help him manage certain things, and obviously, when, depending on where you are in the public roadway, we have our fire director over here, who can be of service, our chief, who's probably partying downstairs right now, can also be of service there, and it helps them with their work as well. Do you have any idea what the, I know you're still trying to figure it out, it sounds like, but what the dollar value will be for something like this?
I would not comment on that yet, I have no idea, and I wouldn't want to throw out a wrong number. I'll make sure to let Public Works guys know as soon as we have an idea.
Yeah, we're just, we want to see what, as you are, probably, now that we don't own the system anymore, we don't have as much eyes on it, can't do as much, so we're interested there. As we would, as we are when Pico does work and stuff like that.
Understood.
All of our utilities, so we know that our residents have access to things. Yeah, and just, I would ask that, as you're doing tonight, as you see potentially other issues or other projects coming up, you could keep us informed so that we can be aware, so we can plan accordingly if necessary, and help communicate with our residents if there are any issues in their neighborhoods.
Yeah, definitely, will do.
I know it's early, you just engaged the contractor, do you have a rough idea of the timeline for repair, restoration, or complete restoration of service?
So we have a site meeting scheduled for next week, and then from there, I, again, I don't want to comment yet, because it's going to be a large project, obviously, the lake is right next to it, there's going to be significant amount of preparation that we have to do, and assuring to ensure safety of the trench and all that. We'll follow all environmental procedures, permits, policies, and...
Is there any other questions?
Yeah, I just had a quick question, so in the one slide, you illustrated homeowners having that cleanout. Is there any literature that maybe you can mail out to homeowners to kind of explain what that is, and have them go out and take a look to see whether or not they do have a damaged cleanout, and whether or not it's something you maybe can offer on? I mean, I know you guys can't say you have to get this repaired, but maybe give them some insight on why it's important to have it repaired?
Definitely, I would love to do that. Educate the customers on what they can do to help us, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to think that all of our residents are watching tonight, but I think they're not, so some mailers would be helpful, and that way, they know exactly what it is that you guys are up against from their side of the curb.
Right, yeah, we've had some conversation, and we're going to coordinate an internal meeting to try to develop some strategies, some educational material, those kinds of things to address, to help address the issue collectively, so.
Thank you, sir. Thanks.
Dave, relative to what township, how the township could impact this in the future, what, I thought we had a discussion about ordinances where we couldn't connect bounce bats and other things to the laterals.
That, we have existing prohibitions in terms of, Jim, I believe we do, right? Yeah, yes. So those are, yeah, unpermitted prohibited connections, yes.
Which, so we have something there, and then when we do our inspections at time of sale, right? That's another opportunity to have eyes on that, right? Stuff that we can do as a township.
Right, yeah. And we have, I believe, a grease trap ordinance as well.
At time of sale, I'm sorry, John.
So it's a sewer lateral inspection at time for, when you exchange?
Yeah, we don't do that, right? That's an outsourced thing, and they put the camera down the...
Correct.
I don't think they're going around checking if the sump pump is, I just don't want people to misunderstand what their obligation is, or what we say the obligation is.
Is there, there is on the website a list of providers who do the camera for that, and Jim, I see you're coming up, it might be good for you to just mention that.
Yeah, actually, at the time of sale, or prior to the sale of a home, they're required to do a sewer lateral inspection. As part of that, the plumber checks to make sure there are no crossconnections from any sump pumps or any other line other than sewage that go into the line. So that is part of that, and they certify that they have done that. And then we review the video, the video's done by a plumber hired by the homeowner. We have our engineer check the video to look for items that maybe are questionable and need to be replaced. And occasionally, we do have people who need to replace, in some cases, their whole line, parts of their line, in order to reduce the INI infiltration and inflow that would get into that pipe and ultimately into our sewer lines.
I have a question around that.
Sure.
Thank you. So the scope that you do is from the, where does its scope start? Does it start from the street to the homeowner, or does it start at the homeowner curb line back to the homeowner, just that part of the lateral, or is it the entire run from the homeowner back to the street?
The entire run from inside the home out to the street.
Out to the street, so if there's anything that's found on the homeowner's side, obviously they're responsible for it, if there's anything that's on the Aqua side, are we reporting or relaying that information back to Aqua?
Yes. So if we find something that's at the curb line and in towards the street, we notify Aqua, and they put it on their list to ultimately address.
Do you know how many of those have occurred since we put in the new ordinance for the sewer lateral inspections, where we've had to let them know that there's infiltration on their side of it?
Probably a few dozen.
Okay, do you know if there's any action items around those?
Yeah, well, I know, prior to Aqua buying it, I think we had the ordinance in place, and I think we had to actually go out and do some of it. But yeah, Aqua has gone out and cleaned out roots, replaced sections of pipe where they felt they needed to.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, with that, I think we can move on to Agenda Item Eleven. Oh, we have a public comment, okay. April, if you could just identify yourself and whether you're a resident of Lower Makefield Township?
April Bowies Clover, resident of Lower Makefield Township. I was wondering if you all had an update on the Mapleville neighborhood? We're seeing, I'm not as well-versed in this section, because it's really affecting Meadow, but there's a pumping station at the end of Meadow Drive, Meadow Road, and they're seeing backups in a couple homes there from the sewer, and I was wondering if you all had an update on that, because I know some people are watching it. Thank you.
My colleague Tyler can provide an update on Mapleville. Tyler?
Hello, my name's Tyler Njane, I work for Aqua, Pennsylvania. I'm an operations supervisor for the sewer system there. I am not a resident of the township.
Can you get closer to the mic?
Sure.
Oh, phone call too, okay.
Okay. So first to address the Mapleville neighborhood situation, the INI infiltration infiltration in that neighborhood is extreme, to the point that there are only just over forty homes, I believe, in that neighborhood, and we see sometimes a full eight-inch pipe worth of flow coming into that small pump station. So what we had been doing up until just recently was we had a much larger diesel-powered pump externally that was managing the flow that was coming into that pump station. But actually, just recently, we began lining a majority of that neighborhood, so that lining is actually complete, which has made some impact to date, although there were a number of runs that had been repaired previously that we were unable to line, and we are currently working on getting a contractor to remove the previously completed repairs so that we're able to line through them, so that'll help. Finally, the thing that we completed most recently, there's a section of pipe that goes into the pump station where a majority of this flow was coming from, and we actually, just last week, completed grouting of the joints, which is essentially putting cementitious material in each joint to stop water from coming into our pipe, and that made a significant impact on the amount of flow that we're seeing at that pump station, to the point where we actually are able to no longer use the diesel-powered pump, and the pump station is functioning as it was designed to function, pretty much starting last week. So we have seen a lot of progress in that neighborhood, and we are still continuing to do work there to make sure that we're able to handle the flows and that we don't see any more backups in that neighborhood from infiltration.
Thank you, Tyler. There's a member of the public on the phone?
Yes, there is, we have Michael on the line, I can bring him in right now.
Michael, can you identify yourself, full name, and whether you're a resident of Lower Makefield Township or not?
Hi, all right, Michael Brennan, Six Mapleville Drive, I just want to piggyback on the prior comment and follow-up. So I'm the last house before the pumping station, and I can say I've noticed a significant improvement over the past week, so I do appreciate that. Prior to that, with two of the big rainfalls, we had my line backed up all the way into my house, I had it scoped twice, and was told that the issue is somewhere in the street. I reached out to Aqua, haven't heard back yet. Just calling, because I'd like to get response, because it's a pretty significant job that I have to get, that I have to pay for, and it sounds like the issue is off of my property in the street, which is causing my line to back up. So if somebody could give me a call from Aqua or stop by, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem, we have your address, we'll get in touch with you and make sure we get the right contact information for who you can reach out to for the claim. Additionally, I guess, before we let you go, Michael, do you guys have email addresses you could give Michael, so that he could connect with you? Yeah, yeah, is it easier to read it out, or can I give it to somebody? Do you have Michael's contact information, April? Oh, you have it? Yeah, so we'll link you guys together, so Michael doesn't have to reveal his phone and/or email publicly, and for you guys, that way we'll, that way we can make sure that there's a connection there, and that you can follow up on that. I know there's another member on Mail and Drive who has a question in to you, Tyler. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Okay.
That has to do with the pumping station on Mailin, so.
So he's twenty Mailin, that person?
Yeah, twenty, twenty Mailin, yeah.
And I believe, yeah, he has your email, and you've, he's, okay, you'll reach out to him then this week? Okay. If you could come closer to the, sorry.
I'm sorry, the pumping station on Stackhouse, at the corner of Stackhouse and Mailin.
Understood, yeah, so we have been in communication, and we surveyed the property to address some of the concerns and get a better idea of what's actually, where property lines are, where easement lines are, where certain utilities are located, and we're just waiting for that information to come back from the engineer that we enlisted to complete that survey.
Thank you, Tyler, I know there's one more additional in-person public comment?
Yeah, Lori Gray, I am a Lower Makefield Township resident, and maybe excuse my ignorance or my lack of knowledge, not... Knock on wood, I don't have this issue, but like, does Aqua have to notify the township when they have problems? Like, are you, was the board aware of all these issues that, okay, so you are, so this was not?
They had to file, if Kyle mentioned that they filed a report with Pennsylvania DEP and it was SSO report is what it was called, we talked about. San Terry Sewer Offflow Report. And that report came to Derek first, I'm sure there was a call, but then all of us had it within, I don't know, an hour or two.
Okay, so whenever Aqua identi-, not to interrupt you, I apologize for that, but whenever Aqua identifies a problem or if a resident like myself calls and says, oh, my gosh, I'm getting, you know, backup into my home, Aqua does notify the township. Okay, great.
Correct, yeah.
Just make sure.
The calls come into us, the Public Works, people don't realize who, where the police officer drive around, they see something coming out of a manhole, so we get notified at first, so we know about it almost as it's happening.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that.
I'm assuming we have no other public comment on this issue? Hearing none, we'll move on to the engineer's report. Paul?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and fellow supervisors. We have distributed our engineer's report dated April 10th for this meeting. A few items I would like to highlight are Highland Drive. We are finalizing the design and calculations and plan to submit to Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, PADEP, and the Bucks County Conservation District, DCCD, for the next supervisors' meeting on May 1st. Next item, the Taylorsville and Woodside Trail Connection. Data collection has begun. Cameras were installed at the three study intersections, those being Taylorsville and Woodside, Taylorsville and southbound I-95, Taylorsville and northbound I-95. The hours of collection were between 6:00 to 10:00 AM and 3:00 to 7:00 PM. Finally, discuss some grant opportunities. There's a Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, DVR PC, has a multi-use trail grant due May 3rd. There is no match required and the maximum award is $200,000. RVE will look with, to work with staff to look at this grant opportunity to pair with the Taylorsville and Woodside Trail Connection project that is currently under design. Finally, Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Multimodal Transportation Fund, DCEDMTF, has a transportation asset improvement grant due July 31st. There is no match required and the awards will run from $100,000 to $3 million. RVE worked with staff for this grant opportunity as well to pair with the anticipated Taylorsville Road Sidewalk and Stormwater Improvement Project that is being discussed as a potential project. We will also work to pair any other applicable grants with this potential project. Those are the key points of the engineer report. I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
All, just a quick one on that. I know you've talked to Supervisor Ross about the sidewalk component. This is really designed to help us with stormwater management on Taylorsville Road and for the Mapleville community in terms of sidewalk grants, right? So we would have a very good shot at this, I think, possibly with PennDOT support, right?
Yeah, I think, and we've talked to our state representatives about it and PennDOT on the road tours and others. You know, as we talked about late last year, obviously a sidewalk is nice for residents to safely get into town and connect to the the Yardly Borough Sidewalk, which they were recently awarded their final phase award so they can finish that up. At the same time, one of the biggest issues on Taylorsville is, as anyone who drives that knows, Taylorsville has been around a long time, which means it's grandfathered relative to stormwater management rules. So when you put in something like a sidewalk, one, you have to deal with stormwater management, so you have inlets to direct the water. And at the same time, the curb associated with a sidewalk does help to direct water, prevent it from reaching backyards and then direct it to the stormwater inlet. So it has a many positive benefits if we can get this done, so we're going to get this done. Supervisor Ross has done this before and he's helping us out again. Then we're going to work with our state representatives to hopefully get some support on the funding. So more to come on that, but it's, that's it. Looking good so far.
Any other questions or comments related to the engineer's report? Is there anyone on the phone?
There's no public comment online.
On, with that, we'll move on to agenda item 12, Finance, and we'll be introducing Barry Luber. Talk about our chief financial officer, welcome.
Thank you.
I think this is your first official appearance for business.
Yes, it is. First time talking. Thank you, Mr. Chair and fellow board members. I'd like to introduce you to three financial policies today. I'm not asking for any action to be taken, it's really to introduce them to you. There's a lot to digest. And I would welcome any comments either tonight or in the next couple of weeks and we'll, with the manager's approval, throw it back on a future agenda for consideration. Just in any organization, it's good to have policies and procedures. So over the next several months, we're going to be recommending several for your consideration. It helps staff, you know, guide us through a variety of things such as investments and fund balance, which is critical to any organization, to any government organization. Additionally, to having the policies and procedures, rating agencies look more favorably on municipalities that have professional management, adopt policies, procedures, and just as important, follow them. And so, you know, when the time comes, if the board wants to go back out to market for borrowing, this will certainly help at that time as well. Three policies are fund balance policy, investment policy, and capital projects policy. I think the most important, just my personal opinion, is the fund balance policy. You know, we hear about all these storms and we had one in 2023 that we ended up spending $475,000 on the cleanup and reconstruction of some stream banks and channel banks. We had to pay for that, we did not get reimbursed for that. So, you know, you need cash on hand for those type things, natural catastrophes, a variety of issues, just like you would in your personal bank account. You won't have two or three months of reserve on hand for an emergency, you know, medical illness, you lose your job, fire, whatever. Government's no different, we need to do that as well. Government Finance or Government Finance Officers Association, which is a governing body for municipalities across the country, used to recommend 15%. They did away with that a couple of years ago. I searched high and low on their website and finally had to call them and they said they're not recommending any amount anymore. Every municipality is different. Again, Moody's, not that this is a reason for fund balance, but the more, the higher fund balance you have, Moody's looks on that, in fact, they removed a negative outlook on the township when they sold the sewer system and had that influx of cash. So at that point, Moody's removed a negative outlook. So again, they would look more favorable having a fund balance reserve. We're currently in 2024 budget at 23.85%. That's a budgeted number based on what the final results of 2022, as you know. We're just finishing up the audit there and then we're going to start the 23 audit. So it's not, it's not an exact number, but it's a good ballpark. I'm recommending with the manager's concurrence that the board adopt a fund balance policy of a minimum of 25%. You know, it gives us, you know, a few months' reserve. GFWA also used to indicate that you could have a maximum too. If the board wanted to adopt the maximum, they could, they could leave it open-ended. If they wanted, I would throw it out as a 40% consideration. Now, keep in mind, you know, we haven't, we're going to be building the budget for 2025 and we have some challenges. As you know, 2024 was a challenging year to balance the budget. We had some transfers from other funds as a way to balance the budget in 2024. But as you know, you know, if you keep using one-time revenue sources, eventually they go away. So we need a steady source of revenue going forward to meet the demands of the community, you know. As we've heard from Aqua and other people tonight, you know, we've got to maintain our infrastructure, that's paramount. And then, of course, quality of life, which includes public safety and fire, which we also heard from tonight. So fund balance policy is one that's in your packet, you have information on that. The second is investment policy. And why I say it's not as critical as fund balance policy is because the state has a lot of rules of what we can and cannot do anyway for investments. We're sort of formalizing that, we're putting that in, we're putting that in writing, here's what we're going to follow. Up until a few years ago, you could pretty much only invest in T-bills, CDs, money markets, checking accounts, and that's about it. Now they've opened it up to commercial paper and lots of other investments. I'd like the board at their leisure to read through that and see if you just want, you want to conform to the Pennsylvania requirements and invest in all those things as options, whether you want to do it to the core things that used to be allowed. And then I would come before, Dave and I would come before the board if we wanted to invest in something other than that for board's consideration. So that's the second policy. The third, and I'm sorry, the important things to take away from the investment policy is safety of the money first, beyond everything else. You would think investment earnings is top, it's really last. Yeah, it has to be, you know, we have to invest in legal items that we're allowed to invest in legally. We have to make sure the money's safe and liquidity is actually third. We have to make sure we have money available to pay the bills. Fourth is return investment. When all those other three are met, then we want to try to get the highest return that we can. And one of the things that we're required to do in Pennsylvania is have anything over $250,000 collateralized. The 250 comes about because FDIC or FSLIC insurance covers you for the first 250. We don't need that coverage for that, but anything above that, a financial institution has to set aside collateral and pledge it to Lower Makefield, you know, should the bank go under or failure. So they're the four investment items and I, you know, would ask that you read that and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Just have one more policy, the capital projects funding policy. Lower Makefield's no different than the vast majority of municipalities in the state and the country where we don't have a steady stream of income for capital projects. We, like a lot of municipalities, borrow money to fund our capital projects. We, like a lot of municipalities, seek grants for a lot of our projects. And of course, you know, I'm going to come before the board at a later time to talk about the sewer proceeds that are in the trust and get the board's input on how you want to spend those proceeds. You know, what I'm hearing is preserve capital and use the interest to fund some operations. And that's, that I think is a good approach, but we'll get into that further at later meetings. But the other item on capital projects funding policy, I'm going to be sending out the revenue and expense report for the first quarter in the next day or two, which is going through some final reviews. But one item that caught my eye when preparing the report was real estate transfer tax. We're $400,000 behind last year at the same quarter, at the same time, March 31st. So I did a little digging and the reason was we had three office buildings sell in January of '23, which brought in $400,000 of one, I'll call it one-time revenue. It's not really one-time, the building can sell again this year or 20 years from now, but it was a large influx of cash. And the capital projects funding policy, we'll say with the board approval, that, you know, look, let's look at the whole budget and we're doing okay. We're meeting budgeted revenue, we're meeting budgeted expenditures. Do we want to take some of that surplus and throw it toward the capital project as an additional source of revenue for capital projects? We're not in that position to do this yet because, like I said, we had a little difficulty balancing the 2024 budget. We're going to have the same difficulty and, you know, the manager and I will come with you and do some presentations later on budget and give you some ideas and some options. But we're not in a position to do it, but again, it's a policy that's worth looking at and considering real estate transfer tax or, you know, some huge windfall, a donation. You know, you know, there's a few items, but, you know, a major development that we didn't budget for, you know, commercial development, which would produce excess cash for both real estate transfer tax, real estate taxes, building permits, parking wreck and open space fees, you know. As you folks know, whenever you sell one house, there's, were five different revenue categories that that hit, that sale of the house or development would cover. Sorry if I'm being long-winded, that's pretty much, pretty much everything. I'm happy to take any questions now. And if not, I would ask, you know, for any questions, send me by email or call me. And, you know, with the manager's approval, put it on the next agenda for consideration or a future one.
Are there any questions by board members?
Yes.
Just a couple.
Speak to James. Sorry, Barry, you brought it up, so I have to ask.
Okay.
Putting aside the fact that there was the sale of the office buildings last year, when you look out for the amount of revenue that we are projecting to come in from transfer tax, given that, you know, we're reading that there's really not as much inventory for houses for sale, like, do you expect that we'll meet the number we have in the budget?
You're putting me on the spot, but I don't believe, I don't believe we will at this point because the three monthly amounts that we have are also lower than the average of last year. Even putting, not counting that large investment, the monthly average is lower. Now, again, that's only three months, we have nine months ago and, you know, hopefully I'm wrong and there's another office building or a shopping center that sells. But just based on residential sales, it's not likely. And you brought up a good point about future land development too. You know, obviously, when there's a lot of land and there's these big housing developments going on, you're bringing, you're hitting all those revenue categories. Again, once that land goes away, all you have is redevelopment. So, you know, you're tearing down a house, building a new house. You know, you're maybe changing a shopping center, doing some additions. So, yeah, that, you know, the flip side of that is the real estate tax base has been built up a little bit when we do these developments. But at this point, you know, if I had to say no, based on what dialogue I'm seeing right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a couple of things that just popped out. Are we collateralized on anything larger than $250,000 right now?
Everything over 250 has to be collateralized.
Okay, so we're already in that.
Yes, we get monthly statements from any financial institution where we have money where they give us a list of what assets they pledged as collateral.
Okay, so we're good on that. The fund balance at 25% for the reserve, what are we currently at?
The budget is 23.85. That was, that was developed when we were, when staff was developing the 2024 budget. So we didn't have the 23 final numbers. I imagine it's somewhere in that neighborhood.
And you mentioned that the recommendation's 40%?
25 is.
It is 25%, okay.
If you, if the board wanted to consider a maximum, 40 would be, you know, a reasonable number.
Okay, and just on that issue, I mean, just from a cash flow perspective, that, I mean, again, given how we fund and finance services, largely property tax-based, we're not seeing influx of other taxing revenues over the course of the year. Essentially, the first quarter, there's limited revenue that's coming in, so that the importance of 25% given our sources of revenue becomes more important here than perhaps other communities that have other diversified revenue streams.
Yeah, good, good point.
My last question was the investment policy, is that specific to fund balances that we currently have? I mean, this is separate just to.
That's investment policy for all township assets other than pensions and other than the trust fund for the sewer sale.
That's what I want to do, address.
Every.
So is everything else outside?
Every other cash, golf, golf course cash, all cash.
Excellent, okay. That was all I had. Thanks.
Thank you, Barry. New policies are always fun and new job, right? I have the same question about the trust to see how the policy integrates with the, you know, with the trust. You know, we have a trust policy, right? We have our charter for the trust.
Yeah.
And then we have.
Yeah, those are governed by separate statutes, so Act 10 is what dictates essentially non-trust assets and what's permissible in terms of investments and that's what Barry was referencing.
And maybe this will set you at ease a little bit, but I think once we get a couple of COs, right? We should have some changes to valuations and increase tax revenue for some of the development of Prickett, right? Because that's not complete.
Correct, there's some assessment growth that'll occur as a result of the development that's occurring there, yes.
And there may be a few others that get reassessed potentially with increase, but still, it's an issue that we need.
I know I went over the open space, Matt, when Mr. Kratz already showed me the different open parcels that could be developed or some are in the process, different stages of development. David, I think it was like seven or eight or nine parcels of any type of significant size.
Roughly, I mean.
Roughly, so it's not a lot, but, you know, shape of farms and somebody else.
Yeah, well, you're foreshadowing one of our conversations later today where we're hoping to not get all those, have all those developed.
Yeah, double-edged sword, right?
It is. Without getting into too much detail, you know, without kind of jumping the gun on the next one of our discussion items, I'm wondering how these policies are affected by or vice versa, would impact, you know, future bond funds of some type that we may have.
So, you know, as I said, having the policies will definitely help. So, you know, you know, as I said, having the policies will definitely help, help. They're not near as important as having a strong, healthy fund balance. That that's paramount. Fund balance is paramount. God bless you. Also paramount is not drawing down other funds to bounce budget each year. One year is okay, two years might be terrible. Once you do it a third year, Moody's and Standard and Poor's are saying, hey, there's a structural deficit here. You're balanced, you're balancing your budget by shell game, moving, moving things around. And and then you're going to get, you know, hit with a negative outlook or even a downgrade of bond issues. Policies will definitely help, but having, having the fund balance policy and adhering to the fund balance policy will will have the most impact when we go to bond ratings.
That, that's perfectly lead into, we didn't plan this. Obviously, policies are the, are really the first step to establish, right? And then I'm assuming that future steps will be developing a long-term financial plan, for lack of a better description. Not only for the budget purposes, but for three, five, whatever, how many year plan to get ahead of the game, right?
So soon, no, no dates to be exact yet, but I'm hoping by June to have a five, six-year capital plan showing capital projects, you know, working with Derek and Monica and Paul and Isaac and so on. And Dave, of course, you know, the wish list. We'll start with those that are mandated, those that are, you know, work our way down and that will be referred to board at budget time to consider which ones, which ones they want to fund. At this, also probably at budget time, we're going to do a five-year general fund forecast for five years, looking forward, making some assumptions on inflation. Make some assumptions on growth of staff, if any. Growth of residents, obviously, if you have, you know, more, more residents, you need more fire protection. You heard from Tim earlier, sounded like he was, he was laying, laying some groundwork. I won't, I won't speak for Tim, but it sounded like he was laying a little, is he still here? Not like he was laying a little groundwork to tell you what's probably, probably coming down the road. And it's probably not a shock to any of you paid firefighters. You know, he made several comment references to that. Again, that will be in the five-year forecast as well. You know, for the board's consideration, obviously, everything's for the board's consideration. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I, I know it's, it's not a detailed question, it's just general, what's, what's the plan to make a plan kind of thing?
I just have a couple of quick ones, Barry. Obviously, the investment policy, and I hate to say this, I don't know if you remember Orange County in the mid 90s. Prohibits any synthetic instruments or derivatives. They're not properly collateralized, right? So there, there won't be any games that way.
Right, right.
Just have to bring that up, who, who remember that? That was, gosh, 97. Yeah, that guy was flying high for a while. And then unfunded or contingent liabilities. Have we thought about policies for those, for things like OPEB?
Yeah, so we're kind of. Thought, thought about and haven't done much work on them. I wanted to get the core things done. We, we got to get the, the budget balanced, we got to get that done. I, I think that's, you know, a high priority. I think having a long-range forecast and have a long-range capital plan is paramount. Get that, get that stuff done. OPEB is great. That, you know, it should be looked at to be funded. I could tell you a lot of municipalities don't have any funding or very minimal for OPEB. You know, when that came out, municipalities have to, in the audit, you have to footnote it, you have to tell what that liability is. But you don't have to do anything about it. It's not like the MMO for the pensions where you have to actually fund it. You know, someday that'll probably come. But yeah, OPEB is definitely something that, you know, we need to take a look at. As I would say, lower on the priority list.
Any other comments, any public comment? Anyone on the line?
There's no public comment online.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just want to thank Barry for the work that that he's doing. Again, started on March the 11th, jumped into a number of these, these issues, which are important issues. They're foundational and fundamental issues. And so I just wanted to publicly recognize his, his contribution, the contribution of his staff in working through these issues. And again, ultimately positioning us or attempting to position us for future success and sustainable success moving forward. So thank you, Barry.
Sure, my pleasure. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, thanks.
Moving on to Gen item 13, managers' report.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The first item for your consideration is acceptance of a proposal from Granicus for host compliance, short-term rental identification, compliance monitoring tool. At an annual cost of $3,591.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? This tells me it should have been on the consent agenda.
Yeah, I mean, just generally, if I may, so, so again, as, as the board is aware, we have a short-term rental registration and licensing process. The tools that are available for compliance, it's largely been, you know, sort of an honor system, if you will, in terms of property owners that are utilizing their property for Airbnb, vacation rental by owner and other types. This is just a tool that essentially cross references the various sites in which folks can list their, their properties. And then we can ensure that those properties are properly licensed, that they're consistent with the ordinance requirements that the board has set forth. As opposed to, again, more of an honor system kind of approach. The tool is intended to be funded through licensing fees, so there's no cost to the general taxpayer on this issue. We will be bringing back an amended fee schedule to amend the licensing fee or registration fee for short-term rentals. And then some of the other changes that the, the board has, has made in recent ordinances. For example, the boarding fee that that is now in the vacant and foreclosed property registration ordinance. And then just updating some language related to the vacant and foreclosed property registration. But again, the intent of this tool is to help staff monitor compliance. But the cost of this will ultimately be borne by the, those that are, that are engaging in this activity that through, through licensing or registration fees. So we, we would recommend acceptance of the proposal. We did price other competitors out. We, we did an evaluation. This was the best and lowest cost option for us to move forward with.
Supervisor or public comment? Is there anyone on the phone who's commented about this?
There's no public comment.
Call the question, all those in favor of accepting the proposal from Granicus for host compliance. Short-term rental identification and compliance monitoring tool at annual cost of $3,591. Signified by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much.
The next item, there was a memo in your packet just outlining some potential amendments to the requirements that govern short-term rentals. Again, there's not a tremendous number of short-term rentals in the township, anywhere from say 10 to 25 at any given time during the course of the year. And as you know, there, there are existing requirements that, that govern that, that use. We have had some challenges related to short-term rentals, not, not many, but some challenges in the community. And so staff has been looking at potential amendments to the township's existing short-term rental ordinance. Using other municipal codes as, as sort of models or reference material. And so in your packet was a list of, of sort of potential items to consider. Again, we're not asking for any action this evening, but just things to sort of think about within the context of, of short-term rentals. So those items included things like the person in charge or the management company responsible for management of the short-term rental being required to be within a certain mile radius of the short-term rental use. So again, using other examples, 25 miles was sort of a common radius that, that, that we were, we were seeing. As you know, the rental periods for short-term rentals are a minimum of seven for whole-house rentals, a maximum of 30 days for a whole-house rental. Some municipalities have taken that forward, sort of to an additional step to say that you would limit the STR use to only 120 days in a calendar year or a license period. So right now, in theory, somebody, as long as they're meeting the minimum or maximum requirements, could continuously rent a house for short-term rental purposes. Putting a maximum number of rentals over a calendar year period would be another sort of restriction in terms of, in terms of use. We have had some complaints regarding parking and disruptions in neighborhoods. So some of the municipal ordinances require off-street onsite parking spaces for the short-term rental use. So again, it's not occupying spaces within the neighborhood for that use, but there's adequate parking facilities that are off-street. And again, as the memo references, you, you would look to make those consistent with the dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance. And also with, consistent with the general design standards for parking spaces that are imposed on, on land development. Related to that, again, a parking plan demonstrating that they have the capacity to accommodate those dimensionally compliant parking spaces and the required number is, is something that, that we're seeing in other ordinances. Requiring proof of liability insurance with minimum coverage amounts. With the declaration page clearly noting that the property is being used for short-term rental use or rental use. Again, some, some municipalities are requiring that. And then over the years, I think there's been general discussion about enforcement provisions for non-compliance. Ranging from concepts relating to increasing monetary penalties. And or even looking at prosecution of violations as a summary offense. Which for repeat offenders would, would potentially get into requesting consideration of imprisonment or, or other things that are available under the, under the criminal code. And all of these are items that ultimately the solicitor would have to, to look at as, as well. But I just wanted to sort of introduce some of these potential items for the board's sort of thought, consideration, discussion. And, and again, doesn't necessarily need to be received today, but any feedback or any interest in, in sort of pursuing amendment or enhancement to the existing short-term rental ordinance. You know, staff is prepared to do that if that's a priority of the board.
I love them all.
Same, I think most of them are pretty good. There, there's a couple I think are pretty good, but I'm kind of spinning around my head to see if there's potential negative side effect. The parking one is especially interesting.
Yeah.
I like that. But really, we have these rules and regulations and requirements and whatnot. That most people seemingly abide by.
Yeah.
But I, for some of our, our repeat customers, I guess, or repeat offenders. Definitely interested in what our enforcement actions could be and, and how we may be able to elevate those a bit to be a real deterrent to some of these things that we're hearing about.
Good morning.
Along those lines, I think it's no surprise that occasionally we'll have a few individuals who are not customers, they're frequent recidivist offenders of our, of our ordinances. And I'm wondering if there is a way that, that we could look systematically for somebody across all of our ordinances who are violating, whether it's property management or other elements of our code, that if they have a certain number of violations over a period of time, the penalties increase. And, and the, the thought I thought of, again, bringing back to discussions of California. But in the 1980s, they instituted something called the three-strike rule for felony offenses. Now, there were a lot of unintended consequences with that policy. However, though, if somebody commits three significant offenses, there should be some recourse for repeat offenders. And I would wonder if there's a way we could do that to collect, because in some cases, someone might be violating both the property management. But they also might be doing other, the short-term rental, so they could be causing multiple issues. And again, we're talking about a very narrow segment of the lower Makefield population. We're, we're under the sub-five people out of the 33,000 that this would ever apply to. But that they're just consistently repeat offenders that we need to address. And I'd like to see if we could find something that would go for summary offense for that and look consistent, if we could legally.
I don't know if I can comment directly on that, if, if it's permissible. I would think that you would be able to, it would be, I think the devil's in the details. Because you'd have to decide, you know, which offenses are going to be sort of integrated together. What offenses, what would constitute an offense in, under what section that you would link together to impose more significant, I guess. That's what I'm looking for is more significant, yeah, thank you, to, to a, to a resident. As far as the, the managers and the staff's outline of what they're proposing, I think they are fairly easily, easily integrated into your ordinance as it's written. In fact, your ordinance is, is, is very good. And it does have provisions for enforcement that are pretty tough. It just is a matter of really enforcing the enforcement mechanisms that are outlined.
And just sort of backing up, I know we already took action, the compliance tool, again, sort of, one of, one of the values of that is, is will help us sort of monitor compliance, but then also provide a record of evidence. Because I'll use the example, we have, you know, minimum of seven-day whole-house rental right now. Again, folks can go in and change listings. So I'm not suggesting that's happening here, but as we were going through the evaluation. You know, folks were saying, well, you might have a seven-day minimum, but then Friday afternoon, somebody's changing it to a two-day minimum or a one-night minimum in order to capture activity on the weekend because of, and, and again, we're, we're not here, obviously, on the, on the, on the weekends. But there will be a timestamped sort of record showing, showing changes to the listing. So there's, there's, there's an opportunity for, while we have, to the solicitor's point, some decent provisions as it relates to enforcement, that tool will enable us to, to, to really crack down and provide the evidence necessary for prosecution in the event that there is a repeat offense of, of, of activities, so.
Any other board comment? Any public comment? Anyone on the line?
There's no public comment online.
Moving on to Gen item 13C.
So the next item is a resolution for the board's consideration, resolution 24-11 authorizing execution of a declaration of restrictions in stormwater management, operations and maintenance agreement for the property at 927 Piper Lane. The property was recently the subject of zoning hearing board proceeding in which the entering into a declaration of restriction and entering into a recordable stormwater management operations, operations and maintenance agreement was a condition of that zoning hearing board approval. So the documents have been prepared by, by your former solicitor and are ready for the, for the board's consideration. And the resolution authorizes execution of those items.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? Your second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, not seeing any call to question. All those in favor of resolution 24-11 authorizing execution of the declaration of restrictions and stormwater management operations and maintenance agreement for 927 Piper Lane, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Gen item 14, solicitor's report. I could do that, sure. We have a new solicitor, Maureen Carlton, has joined us today. Welcome. And this is your first meeting. I know that we had your first executive session as well, so hopefully it's been a good meeting so far.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Yes, we did, the supervisors did me for a brief executive session prior to this meeting. There were no formal agenda items discussed, nor were there any deliberations. Being my first meeting, my solicitor's report is very short. I just would like to thank Hill Wallach and your former solicitor, Dave Trulove, for his cooperation in the orderly transfer of files. We're still working on that since it's only been two weeks, but I have every confidence that they will be transferred and will be up to speed very quickly. Finally, just thank you for the opportunity to sit in this seat and for Curtin and Heaton to serve as solicitors to the Lower Makefield Township. And we really look forward to a long and. And we really look forward to a long and prosperous and enjoyable relationship in the future. Thank you.
Thanks. Moving on to agenda item 15, community development. Agenda item 15A.
Yeah, so one, one change in the agenda related to the, to the item. Again, the Cleary-Timco noise minor subdivision plan was intended to be before you for consideration this evening. However, the applicant has granted an additional extension of time to work through some of the anticipated conditions of approval. And so, Jim, when, when have they granted that extension to? So they've, they've extended the board's timeframe for consideration to May the first as, as they're working through those items.
So we would need a, a motion to accept that delay? Is there a motion to?
Still moved?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor of extending the deadline for Cleary and Timco noise minor subdivision plan until May 1st, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Was that all supervisor Blending? Were you and I? Okay, sorry. That would be five-zero. Okay. 15B?
Jim, I don't, I don't know if you want to come up, but perhaps as well. So this was an item as a follow-up to a prior discussion that occurred at the Board of Supervisors meeting regarding notice of matters before the zoning hearing board. Again, the, the existing requirement in the ordinance is to notify budding property owners, which again is consistent with the municipality's planning code. However, we did look at some of our adjacent neighbors and other municipalities in Bucks County. And as you can see from that sort of comparative survey, there is some variation in terms of the scope of notice that is, that is provided. Just keep in mind, as you're looking at these, some of these municipalities from a density and sort of intensity of development standpoint, or, or lots are, are much less dense than us, or much less intense than us. So, um, you know, for example, Solbury with 1,500 feet would end up resulting in, in notice to a tremendous number of property owners. And there's, there's probably not, that's, that's probably not the most efficient use of our time or resource, recognizing that the property is posted. So, uh, you have a question?
Yeah, well, it looks like being mindful and thoughtful about that, the Newtown area jointure, right? And so they considers that when in, you know, 500 feet and when there's a, an HOA with condominiums, such that there would be many more potential homeowners in there, it goes to the HOA rather than the individuals.
Yeah. So just for some perspective and context on this, so previously, we were doing, I think, 200, was it 250 or 300 feet? 300 feet?
Previously, we did 300 feet.
So 300 feet, which would encompass, on average, about 30 notices per, per zoning hearing board case. Again, I would, do keep in mind that the property is posted. It's also advertised with legal advertisement. 300 feet, it, it, it's a fair amount of effort in, in terms of getting folks within 300 feet. So from a staff perspective, while we understand sort of the interest in making sure that there's notice, please keep in mind that there's cost associated with that notice. And the majority of folks, again, are not engaging in the process of the zoning hearing board level to, to, to begin with. So it, it's a balance. I know there was some expressed concern about, you know, a budding and what constitutes a budding, and then therefore you're missing properties that may be separated by public street that are, that are adjacent or have shared frontage. So I, I think there's ways to address that issue. But again, it's, it's ultimately the board's prerogative. I just want to make sure you have an understanding of the, the time, cost and effort involved in expanding notice and, and again, balancing sort of the, the benefits of that with, with, with those costs.
Uh, so far as I can hear.
Yeah, what are, um, how are we provide, when notices are sent out, right? And I, we talked about this a couple of years back when we updated our SALDO requirements. Depending on where, depending on which jurisdiction we're in, you know, I, I sometimes do FedEx notices in my, my day job. Sometimes I have to do certified mailings per, per regulation. Are we do, how, how are we providing notice?
Jim, you want to comment on, are we, are there just regular first-class mail? Is she doing certified mail? I believe it's just first-class mail that she's, that, that she's.
First-class mail every time.
It's first-class mail. When there's a decision rendered, we send out notices to, by certified mail to anyone who's taken party status on an application.
That makes sense.
But even prior to that, you were providing notice of a decision to everybody within that, that respective radius. So that, that's, again, uh, that, one, not statutorily required, and two, that, that's, that's a lot.
I, I know we, we just said that we're 250, 300 feet is, is sort of our fallback, even though it's, not what our ordinance says, but we're going above and beyond just, just because. I, and I know I've gotten feedback and you always kind of want to bring it back to the staff to, to see how true the feedback is, right? That folks that live across the street that would, would be within that 250 to 300-foot radius are saying, telling us that they're not receiving notice. So we want to try to figure a way to reconcile that so that we have it. You know, I think 250, 300, maybe even all the way up to 500. I think we're doing 1,000 for SALDO.
Yeah, the difference on the SALDO is we're, we're placing the responsibility on the applicant to, to, to notify.
Well, which is a potential option here, too.
You, you could do that, yeah.
So I'm just curious, when we, when we provide notice, right? Because we're not doing FedEx or certified mails for, mailings for most things. We don't necessarily have a, a record of it, other than bringing, um, bringing it to, you know, bring to the mail, mail people or whatever. We have a list of, of labels potentially, but doesn't show that, we don't get a receipt for it, so to speak.
Right.
Right?
I know the Pennsylvania, oh, go ahead.
No, no. We're all on the same page. Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, the Pennsylvania municipality's planning code accepts mail as a legitimate form of that. I know, uh, just thinking about it today, I looked up, what do they do in New Jersey for notice? I'd worked in New Jersey for years, and I always remember that it was some lesser amount.
200-foot list.
200-foot. And my thought is that is a sort of halfway point. 200 feet would be a reasonable amount of notice. Most lots here are about 100 feet wide, 120 feet wide. So that would capture the neighbors, the neighbors two doors down, neighbors across the street, neighbors behind you. So it'd encompass a reasonable amount for people who are most directly impacted by any variance.
In, in my experience, I've been working in New Jersey for almost 25 years using the, that guidance, and it, it works very well. So I would.
For a larger application, people will spread the word.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's.
Absolutely. And then we got to figure out where's that, is it 200 feet from the property line? To make sure that we do actually, larger properties, you know, 200 feet might be still within the center of the property. So we just got to make sure that it's clear that we do it 200 feet from the property line or from the property corners or whatever it may be.
And I think it's from the outbound of the property.
I'm, I'd be okay with that if we wanted to go with that. And then for larger projects, obviously, there's word of mouth and other, other things we do as a township, whether it's through our website or Facebook or other things to get the word out, but.
Yeah, for larger appeals, we do try to put out, because we know there's a larger global interest in like the cell tower, for instance.
Exactly.
We do try to get the word out to people on continuances, meetings, stuff like that.
But basically, you know, the current code where it's just, it says a budding, to, to me, is just not quite enough, quite, not quite sufficient. 200-foot lists, like we said, we've been working with it for years. It seems to be successful. It's not overly burdensome. If there's, um, I don't know if we, you know, certain applications for variances that go be, before the zoning hearing board, you know, every resident that wants a pool, do, do, do we want to put the onus on them to put out a variance? Not really.
Or shed, right? I mean.
Or anything.
Yeah, we don't want to shift it to the homeowner.
Yeah, that gets, it's already expensive and pretty expensive for them. Could we, and this might be a question for our solicitor here, could we differentiate between a resident putting in an application versus a developer putting in an application that requires variances and handle that? That scenario like we do with SALDO, so.
Or did, or distinction between a, a dimensional variance and a, and a use variance, for example? That might be a better way to look at it, that, that you have a broader radius of, of notification for a use variance, which is a higher standard on the applicant and, and in turn, and, and should be, quite frankly.
Yes, I'd, I'd be okay with that, too.
I think it makes more sense to look at the, not who is making the request, it's what the request is. Because the developer could make, be making a request for a single-family, you know, minor variance to put in a pool, et cetera. So, yeah, look at what the, what it is, not necessarily who is making it.
Like that. I like 200 feet and.
Yeah, given, again, there's not, the, the, as you know, most of them are dimensional, sort of numeric-related, you know, variances. So the, the use variance thing is, is few and far sort of between. So we, we could expand notice in, in those circumstances where somebody's requesting use variance and then even put the obligation on the, on the applicant in, in those circumstances, because that, again, is sort of a higher burden anyway.
Yeah. On a use variance, you'd increase the 200 feet then, maybe? Yeah, that, that would make some sense.
Yeah. Um, isn't there any? Any issue with, you know, when, when they go in front of the zoning hearing board? There's always the, I have been sitting there now for a few months. There's always the question about who can get standing. And certain attorneys will always argue against folks outside of a given radius getting standing. Is there any, do we need to give that any consideration when we, regarding notices? Does it make any, give that consideration or not?
No, they, they, they are separate and apart, so that should not be a concern. The only thing I do want to caution though is if you do ask the applicant to send the notice, the onus really does come back to the township in some way to, to do a verification that the proper notices have been given by the applicant to the respective parties.
So in that case, we could do like New Jersey does and require certified mail receipts.
Well, you could, and, and some townships still do that. They require, they, that's how they, they do it. But again, there's still a check and balances, because you have to check to make sure that the certified mailings went out, went out to the right people and were received.
You just don't have to look the envelope and do them.
Yeah, that, I mean, that, that's a, that's a great point, because I, I think we have a subdivision land development plan where there's been some question, again, where developers providing notice, folks have said, well, I, I didn't, there's been question related to notice, right?
Uh, yeah, actually, for the one subdivision that just was submitted, some people were questioning why their neighbor down the road didn't get it. And it turns out they were beyond the 1,000-foot radius. And of course, you know, we always tell people, you know, you could always talk to your neighbors about it if you feel that it's of interest beyond the 1,000-foot boundary. And we have received a number of phone calls on that, so.
I'm curious, when we implement this, um, talking about New Jersey too much tonight. In, in New Jersey, when they do, when you do have to do the 200-foot list or other linear projects have, have a different requirement, you typically have to go to the township and pay for the official, uh, official list, ownership list, before you send out your notices. That is one way to make sure that they follow that 1,000-foot radius or whatever, for that one, for 1,000 feet. And then for anything else, we offered that.
Yeah.
That's another way to manage it.
Well, we actually use the county assessment data.
Do they pay you for it or not? For the list?
No, we're, we're doing, we're doing the, we're doing the mailings now as part of, but, but you, I mean, you, that could be a mechanism for verification, is we would provide the list. I mean, even if we didn't charge for that list, we would at least provide the list to verify that these are the properties within the respective radius that it, it would.
All that would do is tell us they knew who they were supposed to mail to. We would still have the secondary.
That's, that's true, yeah.
That they mailed them. I'm not a giant fan of certified mail. You have to be home to get it. They need to go chase it down. I don't really know if that's solving the issue, right? The law says that letters that are mailed are assumed to have gotten received. So if they're truly like, we have a issue in Lower Makefield where people aren't getting their mail, then maybe we should be looking as to that, as opposed to building in these new, you know, checks and balances that may not actually achieve the result we're trying to get.
Well, in first-class mail delivery, as much as the postal service does get hammered a lot, does meet its, you know, recommended time of arrival, many times exceeds it. So people don't appreciate kind of the amazing capabilities of our US Postal Service in terms of just regular first-class mail.
Because them here.
Yeah. Yeah.
A few years ago, they had a little bit of a challenge with the, the mail, and it was a little bit delayed. But I think they've, they've speeded back up to where they were before.
And we still have spot outages, like Atlanta was having issues and stuff. But by and large, in Bucks County, we've been pretty lucky about.
Yeah, we actually seem to have more issue with return of green cards for, for document, like the timely return of those than, than, so even when you have certified, a lot of times we're not getting the green card back, or we're getting the green card back, you know, weeks, months after, you know, the, the, the letter has been delivered.
The two workarounds for that, if we were to require some sort of receipt, for lack of a better term, when they, they, they can provide, the, the applicant can provide, um, copies of the, their, their cards, and you, they can scan those, whatever, photocopy and give it. Or other regulatory agencies allow for FedEx receipts or something akin to FedEx, where you can get pronouns and all that stuff, too, and it shows when things were sent and when they were received. So you don't have to.
This is my, my last comment on this is in general, I would prefer that, and this is a state law issue, that we could migrate to electronic notification with verification that way for property owners so that, you know, A, we can validate they have received it, we could send it instantaneously. But we, we're still waiting. We would need some state law changes for those kinds of things, what the definition writ notification is, so we could save a lot of money and, and many other municipalities as well. Yes. Any other commenting, other comments, public comment, anything on the phone?
There's no public comment on the line.
Uh, moving on to supervisor's report. I, I don't have any report at this time, Supervisor Granier.
Uh, very quickly, the, uh, not the ad hoc property committee, but the Patterson Farm Preservation Master Plan Implementation Committee. I actually, I think I got that right. We had our first meeting to re, to constitute the board, uh, election of officers and getting right to business. We have developed several subcommittees and subcommittee leaders to, or what I'm referring to as subcommittees, but they might call project committees, uh, to start looking at various items that this board, our board has directed them to look at. And I, I foresee them moving quickly and being a dedicated group, so it was a very good first meeting. The only other one, the zoning hearing board, uh, one of the items last night was continued. And the other item was a typical pool variance, where there's some concessions there and some conditions. Farmland, uh, they couldn't get the Zoom to work, so they had to cancel the meeting.
That's all for me. Supervisor Ross?
Uh, we have one thing for Harv that, I'm sorry, not Harv. Long night. Uh, the EAC that's coming up next. Then also, I attended the PSAT's conference this week and attended some very interesting sessions for some FEMA and PEMA updates and some stormwater management techniques. That's all.
Supervisor Blending?
Thank you. The Historical Commission continues to impress, including that members like to spend their free time at libraries researching lots of interesting things. But they are putting together a draft, I'll say ordinance, for us to, you know, have a talking session on, kind of like we just did, to make sure that we have a process for protecting older structures. that if they do have to be knocked down, or someone's trying to knock them down, there's a process, at least, that would have some review. So, kudos to them for doing that. Also, they are planning to help message the, there's got to be a term for it, but I don't know what, the bicentennial plus 50, right? Not next year, but the year after that, 200, 250 years, God bless America. And trying to get the excitement building and projects going and interfacing with the schools. So, it's exciting times.
Supervisor McCartney?
I have nothing to report at this time, Mr. Chair, thank you.
At this moment, move on to agenda item 17, other business, discussion regarding open space bond referendum.
Sure.
Okay, Supervisor Granier, I'll let you go first, sure.
So, I think.
Isn't the EAC, so isn't it Matt? No?
Dan was discussing with some of the members previously with it. Either, and a couple of the members are here this evening also.
And it's not just the EAC, but generally speaking, I'm getting a lot of feedback. You know, as we have, you know, we've seen some large developments come in. We've seen some large ones proposed, whether formally or just word of mouth, that we think there may be some large ones proposed. And it's generally been a while since we've been able to acquire large, large tracts of open space. Now, Township does have, what, 1,200 acres or so of open space? But there seems, there's definitely a feeling that we could do more, potentially. And obviously, I think this board has been pretty pro-open space when we can be. When, issue being right now is availability of funds, in my opinion. So, we're looking at ways to address that, to give us more flexibility to acquire open space when it's available. Obviously, there are parameters around how you can acquire open space, how you can pay for it, how you can borrow for it, et cetera, et cetera. So, this is really a discussion around that, but also, given where we are at this time of year, I know there's interest out there in the public to put this out to referendum, to have a vote on it, to see if we could acquire bond funds to allow us to go forth and look for more open space. So, that's really the crux of this conversation, is to see if the board is interested in going through the process to get an open space bond referendum on the ballot. Maybe, you know, whatever, whenever we could, probably November is my thought. Obviously, lots to go into that. And then start to think about if we are going to do that, how we, how we word that to make sure that it's something that's flexible, that will allow us to move forward in multiple ways. That's my intro. And members of the EAC are here, they were kind enough to provide us some literature. You know, obviously, they did the open space campaign back in 2009, and have been through this process before. So, they're aware of how you get a referendum out there for open space. So, they're here tonight to hopefully answer some questions.
Matt, did you want to?
Yeah, I support what Dan's saying. I think it's something we should investigate and see what the process is and what it entails. And then if it's something that the public wants, then we should investigate, as I said. Putting it on the ballot and let the public decide and move forward from there.
Given that we have some folks from the EAC, they could talk a little bit about the history. We've done this in the past, where we place it on the ballot.
Mr. Chair, before we get there, I just have a quick question. So, just so I get this right, if we do go through bond by referendum, if it gets approved, we are then, as a board, we are tied to actually use that bond money to acquire open space?
No, you ultimately retain discretion as to, like, so, for example, in the, and I'm not advocating for this, but they passed a referendum in 2008. They didn't do anything until 2016, in which they issued debt, and then they designated, well, I guess some of you would have designated portions of that debt to open space acquisition purposes. So, it.
Essentially, it's like a line of credit until you're ready to act on it, but it has to be specific to open space?
The question on the ballot, I mean, again, the gentleman can speak, but would relate to, specifically to open space. So, it would, it would be, or what's being proposed is for acquisition purposes. Again, the language was a little bit broader in 2008. It talked about both acquisition and improvement of property acquired for open space purposes. So, that provides a little bit more flexibility than just simply acquisition. But that's all items that you would have to consider and sort of debate in the form of a resolution that would have to be adopted by the board and then ultimately submitted to the county board of elections.
Okay, and then, again, I'm just thinking out scenarios here. This goes on a referendum, it passes, there is a bond for open space, and open space becomes available at that time, or say within 12 months or wherever.
I can share a little bit about this elastic experience where we purchased the development rights on the, what's then called the Guzikowski farm, I guess still is. So, from the time at which that open space referendum was approved to the time at which we acquired the development rights, no action was taken by the board, meaning that there was no bond issued, no process for that. When the opportunity arose in that instance, that's when we combined that borrowing with other borrowing and segregated part of it for open space for its consideration as electoral debt. And that's when that occurred. So, if, for example, and this is one of the things I'd like to hopefully communicate to folks, in general, the board, over the years, really since 2016, quite frankly, 2015, 2016, has been looking for opportunities to purchase open space. But not all property owners are interested in selling. And as you know, James, appraisals matter, too. And sometimes, folks believe that the township could be their special piggy bank, and they want requests for properties that, A, don't necessarily meet the criteria or not on the EAC's list of review properties, or they're asking them out that is significantly above appraisal amount, which would be out of our realm. So, it's not a guaranteed lock that, and this is what folks need to remember. However, it does give us the flexibility that, when a big opportunity arises, and we could say, hey, this landowner is open to selling either the whole property or development rights, or some form of preservation, that we would have the flexibility and electoral approval to do that.
Do we need electoral approval to do that?
You, for electoral debt, you would. I mean, if you don't.
For a regular bond.
I mean, if you don't, you would just, it would just, you have a lesser borrowing base for, it would cut into your overall borrowing capacity.
Can you give me a rough estimate, like, what would an electoral-approved bond be versus just a board-approved bond?
350 versus 200, 350% versus 250% of the borrowing base? So, there's like a, there's a delta between electoral debt and non.
Take 100 points higher if you do it through electoral.
So, and again, I think you could also talk a little bit about, you know, maybe the mechanism. So, obviously, you know, if you're doing, we're saying bonds, but it doesn't necessarily need to be bonds, right? You could do other forms of, you could do notes. And so, there's some limitation in terms of borrowing, what the market would provide in terms of like a bank loan, for example. Like, you could, on a bank loan, you could have a drawdown provision, but there, because the issue on a bond is once you settle and close, then you're starting to incur interest. And you don't necessarily know that, I mean, to your point, you don't know that you're going to be successful in negotiations with individual property owners, right? Whereas a note with a drawdown provision would permit you to draw down proceeds as, as you, as you essentially negotiate transactions with folks. That being said, again, depending on the amount that we're looking at, banks may not be inclined to provide bank loans for certain amounts. So, we'd have to look at all that issue. You're talking about the validity period for the.
Probably the other one, the battery might be dead, yeah.
Yeah, there's a validity period of 10 years, once the, once the voters would say that it's. What you're talking about as it relates to spending of the proceeds, or what?
Sometimes it's better to have the property in mind and negotiation started before you do a bond issue. But then again, you could do a referendum, because you have to plan that many months in advance. I think the deadline, solicitor might be August to get on the November ballot, I'm not sure, but it.
13 Tuesdays before.
13 Tuesdays, so I think that's August, that you would have to put that on. You know, in addition to the borrowing basis, Dave mentioned, you know, the other, the other reason for a referendum is you're getting support from your constituents. So, you know, you have to weigh that, how important that is to whether you just do a referendum or you just go to market as part of the budget process and borrow debt, you know, non-electoral debt.
And the only reason I'm asking is because I'm going back to the conversation we had 45 minutes ago. So, if we're looking at two years of structural deficit, an increase in, or a possible paid fire department, diminishing limited income based on sources, where's this money coming from to repay the debt for the bond?
Yeah, so, a couple of things about that. So, again, you can't look at this in a vacuum. You know, it's great, the EAC, and it's great to preserve open space, but there's other competing interests, as you folks know. You have the Road Improvement Fund, which is set at 2 mills right now, which brings in $1 million. That's not, is Derek still here? That's not keeping up with our roads, doing $1.1 million worth of roads. We need to be 2 to 3 million, Derek? Somewhere in that neighborhood. So, you know, maybe on the horizon is an increase in the Road Way Improvement Fund for village. So, there's, right, there's a lot of competing interests. We have a structural deficit with the general fund. We don't have a steady stream of source for revenue. You know, obviously, a referendum, I'm not trying to be painting a gloomy picture, but just, you know, a little bit.
Well, I mean, it's the truth.
It's reality.
Trying to figure out how this comes into play based on what our, I mean, our futures are.
So, yeah.
Not great. Yes, you know what I mean? So, I don't know, I don't want to put the board, or this board, or a future board in a position where they have to, based on a referendum, spend money on open space.
So, you can, I think as Dave said, you can do a referendum, and the voters could overwhelmingly approve it. Doesn't mean you need to go out and issue bonds anytime. You waited eight years, I think.
Yeah, again.
Last time, you don't have to do that.
Yeah.
But at budget-building time, you know, staff, David, will present a budget to you which has some options and competing interests. Do we want to do our infrastructure? Do we want to purchase open space? You know, what's the highest priority for the board? And so, there'll be some tough decisions to make. You know, village and referendums and taxes.
As for payment, this would come from a debt service village. That's how the bond would get paid.
Right.
So, yeah, and so we have some debt coming off the books, about $500,000 worth at the end of '24, and then a little more at the end of '25. So, you could go to market without borrowing if you're just looking at it from an open space perspective, but I wouldn't do that because there's other capital needs. So, when I come to you with my Capital Projects presentation, it's going to say that, you know, here's the wish list, here's the ones that are mandated, here's the ones that are critical for infrastructure, here's the more luxury items, you folks have to make that decision. But to just borrow money for open space now, we would not have to raise real estate taxes for debt service. But if you want to combine that with other capital projects, you may. So, but I'll have more details, you know, when we do the Capital Projects presentation.
I think for, and again, we need to say that there's no guarantee, A, that we'll find a property that meets the criteria, although the EAC has been working on this issue for years, multiple decades, and has found properties over time. If there were a transformational opportunity in terms of open space, this would give us the comfort that residents wanted that as an option, because they would have endorsed that if it were to pass, right? And if it doesn't pass, that's also a signal as well that the public policy interest is not to acquire additional open space. So, that's where I would say I don't see a downside risk to it. It does give us additional flexibility if a significant deal comes about. But I want to caution folks that that's no guarantee that that occurs. And we're hopeful that there could be a good open space opportunity for us in the future. I think we all, most of us, over the years, would look for that. We've pushed, I think all of us, many times, have pushed for stuff that, you know, we would try if there's a good spot. So, I just want to, it's, it could be helpful for us if a large opportunity occurs. And it would also pre, anytime you're doing such a huge, significant investment, it would give community support to that if that were to occur. So, people would know, and they'd have that choice, right? If they say, okay, I'm happy with the amount of open space we have, they would potentially vote no, and they'd feel comfortable with that, and that would be a signal to us. And, or, they might say, yes, I'd like more open space, and I value that such that I'm willing to pay for it over time by borrowing X amount, right? And that's a discreet ask we're getting from the voters. So, in that respect, I think it's valuable. And should this occur as a referendum, it's important that, you know, we talk to people about those trade-offs. And again, I don't know if we want to talk at all about the, under separate cover, we did receive, all of us received a memo from the EAC with targeted properties and strategies for ones that they ranked hierarchy-wise. Some we have attempted in the past, but couldn't get a good appraisal circumstance. As you, that you, you know that, you know that business. So, you know, it would keep us moving on that. And if a large transformational deal were there, we would have both the support and wherewithal to do that.
Point. So, just trying to further understand it, because I heard what, I think I understood what you just said and what James also said. So, the language of the referendum, that's something that the board drafts, correct? I mean, with this.
With the legislature drafts, we would.
But, so, presumably, it's, you know, do you support letting X amount of dollars through a bond or notes support the purchase of future open space? But to James's point, right, because I, you know, who wouldn't like more open space, you know? You know me, I want field hockey, moving on. But making sure that the voters know, right? Because I hear a lot from older people who have concerns about taxes and being, you know, priced out of lower meg field. So, even though this is not that type of tax, right? It's something people are asking for because it's important. How do we make sure that people are able to make an informed decision, right? Because it's kind of like, do you want ice cream? Of course I want ice cream, ice cream's fabulous, right? But are you willing to put your nickel down in light of everything that Barry's just made us sad about? And how do we make sure that, you know, people just have access to that information so they can really make the decision?
I think transparency in the process is super important, because, yes, of course, everybody would like open space, but at what cost, right? What's the cost going to be to the municipality? It might not just be an increase in taxes, it might be some other revenue streams that I think this board is trying to avoid altogether, or it might be a decrease in services, right? So, there's going to be a cost for such a thing, and I just want, I want to make sure that, you know, to Suzanne's point, yes, we like ice cream, of course, but are you willing to put on the extra 20 pounds for it?
Right, and what I would say.
And the answer's yes.
To folks along those lines, one, this is, would be an asset purchase. So, it's not an expense in a traditional sense, like, hey, it's not like we're, you know, hiring a whole bunch of people or something like that.
But hold on to that point, just real quick. It's a non-performing asset, actually, that ends up being a liability because there's no.
Hold on a second, that's a good point, because in municipalities that have open space, they see significantly higher property values. And so, this is, if you look at a Colorado State University study, it's 30% higher for municipalities that, or for parcels that are closer to open space. So, you have, on the one hand, there's a cost associated with the acquisition of the asset. There's also a wealth effect for property owners in lower. There's also a wealth effect for property owners in Lower Makefield.
But not for the municipality.
No. No.
Not when the county doesn't engage in reassessments and.
Correct, right, yeah.
Some of us are fighting the county to do those things.
I understand.
And I appreciate that, but I think many people support open space for not just the ice cream elements, that it tastes great, or that it's visually nice to see when you walk, but for the wealth effect that it has on the property values. And that leads to, you know, increases in property values, which everybody benefits from in general. And that trade off, that investment, has been pretty solidly proven, you know, by multiple studies. But the Colorado State University one is the one that, you know, and it's been, it's been a while since they did that study, but I'm thinking 2012, 20, around that. But it was profound, and it got people thinking, hey, we have more open space, right? Our property values increase. And by the way, as much as development does provide tax revenue, it also provides costs, right? So it provides additional infrastructure that we have to support. It provides additional police and fire support, whereas open space doesn't, you know, yes, people do commit crimes on our open space, but not as more frequently as, say, in a store, right? Those are big drivers as to why this could be important for folks. And again, putting it to voters, I think, is a win because voters can tell us what they think. And this is a large potential investment. May not be one we take, but we'd want that authority. And you'd want to feel comfortable saying, okay, this is a decision I can make because I feel comfortable fellow people agree with it.
And then, thanks, Dan. The only other thing is, and, you know, just to cut to chase, I don't want to talk about the specific memo. Thank you for sending it again. Because, you know, if those properties do, you know, like a secret, right? We want to, we want to. But that being said, you know, we have a lot of misconceptions about what property is out there. Somebody told me the other day they were angry that we had sold property for development. And I was like, wow, who did that? Let's go find them. You know, when people think of open space, I think there's also a perception like there's this large, multi-acre, beautiful field out there. And sadly, you know, most of those opportunities are gone. So I don't want this to be just a feel-good, like, hey, ice cream's on the menu. You won't be getting any, but ice cream's on the menu. So I think it's really great that we're having this discussion so early, that hopefully we'll continue with the transparency that James is talking about. I think it's going to be really important.
The only thing I'll add, because these are all great points, is, yeah, 12 or 13 Tuesdays before November? 13 Tuesdays, so we have maybe four months, right? So there's not a lot of time, but there's some time to work through some of these items. Yeah, Barry's singing my language when he's talking about comparing, comparing wants versus needs essentially. But I think it gives us some time to do some analysis to determine what our options may be to move forward with this. To John's point about how many residents seemingly put this as a top priority, obviously, if that goes to vote, we'll know exactly what that is. And that will help us plan for the future, come up with some ideas. It would be helpful to better understand the debt service fund perspective, what the knock-on effect might be for future property taxes, just given what we're looking at.
I have all that essentially ready to go. I'm just waiting to type some loose ends from, you know, Department Heads and the engineer. And we will have a plan.
Barry, you've been here five weeks already, come on.
Hopefully Mayor June will present something to you, which is still plenty of time for the referendum. Just one caveat, when you're wording the referendum, and you guys, well, it's listener's blessing, can word it however you want. You obviously want it for acquisition of space, you want it to improve the acquired land. But the third item you may want to consider is to be able to use on land previously acquired. Patterson Farms, Snipes Property, these things. It gives you a little more flexibility. I mean, that's totally, it's prerogative if they want it strictly for acquisition, just for open space, passive open space, no trails, no anything. But if you want it for anything else, across fields, soccer fields, or anything else, even a passive trail, there's going to be a cost to that. So allowing the language to reflect that, to improve the land you acquire, and if the board desires to improve land previously already owned by the township, however it was acquired.
And the language was pretty broad the last time around. $15 million for purposes of financing the acquisition of interests or improvements to real property for open space, including but not limited to the preservation of environmentally sensitive areas, open space for active and passive recreational purposes to be incurred as debt approved by the electors. So there was, it was pretty broad in terms of the language. Again, the wording of that, is that your prerogative? You would determine what, you know, how you want to, how you want to word it.
So, yeah, so with that being said, is there, I guess, is there an interest from the board to further study this? And, you know, not that we're looking for a vote or anything, I don't think, right now, but sometime the direct staff and solicitors start investigating this and giving us some options over the next several meetings.
I don't know that we need the solicitor yet. I think hearing from Barry will be, and I think we should, you know, maybe make sure we touch base publicly on it at least once a month going forward. But some people have a newborn baby and they're tired. And some people, some people are just empathetic.
Maureen, we won't make you wait till week 14 before the election to say we're together.
In all seriousness, not to put any stress on the conversation, it's not just the August date that's looming, the 13 days prior to the, the 13 Tuesdays prior to the election. It is, what we propose and what we've done in the past is we prepared referenda, ordinance referendum or referendum ordinance, which does require advertisement, et cetera. So you have to jump up from that August date. So we're really looking, if you're looking at a, putting this on the November ballot, you're really looking at May-ish, June for us to get something together to advertise properly.
So is it, that will get tight quickly, this is government. Potentially, could it go during a primary? So next year's primary? If, not that we want to wait that long, but in case it goes that way, could we do it at that time too?
I believe so, yeah. I mean, I know it's focused more on this election, but yes, it can be pushed out past this November election to just a general, I mean, to a primary, excuse me, not in the general.
That's not necessarily my preference, but understanding that we could work through it.
Right.
It is a presidential election, so we should get a really good turnout in this November, so we should get a pretty good feel.
Really?
Anyway.
I'm sensing that we're completing our discussion of this and in deference to Supervisor Ross, who does have a newborn. Moving on, I'm not seeing any public comment. I'm not seeing any public comment.
Quick, just real, real quick, Lori Gray, I am a Lower Makefield Township resident. I appreciate, I think it's very, very important to be very transparent. I think very, speaking from a resident, not as on the board, okay? You really have to make sure your residents understand what they're voting for. And they don't necessarily always do that. So they have to understand where the cost is coming from, what that means to them. Because, to use Supervisor Blundey's, we all love ice cream, you know? We all do. But again, I don't want to gain 20 pounds because I love ice cream. So I think it's really, really important, and I know that you'll pay specific attention to that. So, and thank you.
Is there any on the, on the phone?
There's no public comment online.
Okay. You're killing it. Jim, sure.
I assume this is working? Okay. I know it's late and we'll be brief, okay? Firstly.
It's almost insulting, but could you say, and whether or not you're a resident of the township, please?
I'm sorry. My name is Jim Bray. I'm a resident of Lower Makefield Township. I'm the current chairperson of the Environmental Commission. Next to me is Alan Dresser, and Alan is the co-chair of the Environmental Commission. Again, we'll be pretty brief. Now, as far as the EAC is concerned, there's literally no downside at all to a bond referendum for open space. It's classic democracy in action. It's very, very simple. If the people want it, they vote for it. If they don't want it, they don't vote for it. History has shown us, though, that in Lower Makefield Township, this is probably one of the most popular topics. In the last two open space bond referendums, 78% people agreed to the one and 68% agreed to the other. There is literally nothing else in Lower Makefield Township that ever gets that high of a vote. So, again, the people want it, they vote for it. Now, the people also understand that if they vote yes, and we acquire the bond money, and if we spend the bond money, then their taxes will be higher. Now, there might be a little misconception initially about how the bond referendums actually work. The bond referendum basically says it gives the township the authority and the right to borrow money for the acquisition of open space. That money need not be spent. If it is spent on open space, then the costs that accrue from that expense will be borne by the taxpayer. If not, it won't be. Now, what the open, rather, the Environmental Council has done over the last several years is we have identified several properties. We have recently sent a letter to the board outlining those properties. Now, the way the EAC has always dealt with this is that's proprietary information, and it will remain proprietary. The board knows about these specific properties, and so do we. And that's where it ends. Now, I would hope that the board would view this as an initial list. These were some, what we considered maybe low-hanging fruit, that hopefully we can acquire. There's no guarantee. Generally, the way it's worked is either, after the bond referendum has been passed, that board members actually contact, you know, the people, or in some instances, open space personnel, I mean, rather, EAC personnel, with the approval of the Board of Supervisors, have also contacted the owners. The way the ferry property was actually acquired was, I was actually involved in a direct negotiation with the owner at the request of the Board of Supervisors. We also know who our boss is, okay? And we react accordingly. So at this stage, the EAC is basically saying that we will do anything to help acquire properties that the board seems appropriate. Now, I want Alan to talk briefly too, because he is the one, Alan is the one who's done a lot of the legwork regarding these properties. And he also, I think, did a superb job in laying out the specific steps required to pass a bond referendum resolution. And I heard also what Maureen was talking about as far as timeliness is concerned. Well, I don't think this is something, quite frankly, that we have to sit on too long. And Maureen, I think, said something about, well, if we want it on the November ballot, maybe we have to make a decision in the May-June period. Personally, I think that's quite possible. But again, that will be up to the Board of Supervisors. Alan, you want to talk for a bit? No, you got to flick the switch.
Alan Dresser, 1907 Lindbrook Drive. I just want to say, any help you need, let us know, we're ready to help you. I really think maybe June 5th, you could vote on an ordinance to put it on the ballot. That gives you a month. It's not that complicated, I don't believe, yeah. I think you could do it. Not too much difficulty. And, you know, it'd be much better to have it on a general election. It'll be a big election, November 5th, as opposed to primaries. So I think you want input from as many people as possible. And is Barry the financial guy, the new guy? Okay, he'll come up with a number.
Chief Financial Officer, yeah.
Yeah, on how much it's going to cost. Dave gave us some numbers from Patterson Farm. I tried to prorate those, and it came out to maybe $70 for a 25-year bond, a $15 million one. So just whatever it turns out to be, just let people know that, so they can make the decision, weigh the factors. Just let the people decide, democracy. So let me know if I can do anything. And June 5th, my recommendation.
I just have a quick question. I'm looking at the list that you guys had sent earlier. How exactly did you determine the valuations for these properties?
It was on the Bucks County website, the Flood Plane and Parcel website. They give a value for these, everybody's property. I'm not sure how they come up with it, but they got a value there. So, yeah, it wasn't mine.
It's the assessed value, right? So it's not market value?
Yeah.
It's one eighth of market value, roughly.
Oh, no, are you sure? Because.
I think it's like, it's weird.
It's supposed to be the market.
Don't use Zillow. No, I'm just, I'm asking because I'm looking at a couple of them. I think that they're completely inaccurate. I can't use my professional opinion, but.
I say in the letter where I got the data from, so, yeah. I'm just a messenger.
No, I understand, I just don't want the message to be misleading to the board. Because if you look at some of these numbers, they look like they're realistically attainable, but they're, they're not accurate of what the actual market valuation is. So I don't want to, again, if we're in full transparency in what we're trying to do here, I want to make sure that the public understands what we're looking to attain, what the actual cost of that's going to be, and what it's going to impact taxpayers.
Yeah. So do the due diligence and find out the real value. But that's just what was on the website. I thought I'd give you something. I gave you the cost of the purchase when they bought it.
Yeah.
So you know what their face is.
Okay.
Just go from there.
And as to your point, there are, from memory, looking at what you had in your letter, and obviously there's other ones there, we have actually done some work on some of those properties. So we know some of the real values, at least within the last year or two, so.
Yeah, we have appraisals on them.
Yeah.
All right. I've been told someone's on the phone, I don't believe it, but.
Yes, we won't call her on the line, at least I can bring her in right now.
Okay. Can I give Mr. Ross, or Supervisor Ross, a free pass? Let's take the call, okay?
At least he's in the room with us now.
Hello?
Hello, please share your full name and whether you live in Lower Makefield Township?
Yes, I live at 156 Pinnacle Circle, Yardley Crest, 19067.
And your comment?
Oh, my comment is, I do think you should bring these big items up for referendum. It's the most democratic way. Living in Yardley Crest, a five-acre property that I thought at one time you may have been interested in acquiring, was sold to Triumph Builders, 1101 Big Oak Road, okay? The native trees, woodlands have been removed. And I just want to, there's so few properties left that it would be extremely negligent of you to not move this process forward, since most of your constituents would like to have open space. We don't want to look at roads, parking lots, other things, or else we wouldn't have moved here. So I want you to please consider the small cost of purchasing. So I, I want you to please consider the small cost of purchasing open space with the majority of your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, we adjourn.